Good afternoon and welcome to the December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four Walton County BCC meeting in the South Annex. All of our commissioners are present. I would like to start off with a little just meeting procedures list. As you know, I'm a new chair. I was chair for my first meeting on the north end. But first of all, I want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, 'tis the season, and hope everyone has a safe holiday season and just has a really good time. I'd like to call this, I'd like, excuse me. Before we begin, I'd like to remind everyone that this is a public meeting and we welcome your participat- participation. However, we ask that all comments and discussions remain respectful and focused on the issue at hand. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the board. Please state your name and spell your last name before speaking. Comments should be relevant to the items on the agenda or general matters under the board's jurisdiction. Personal attacks, inappropriate language, or disruptions will not be tolerated. Maintain order and decorum, please. And I'd like to remind everyone to remain respectful so that we can proceed efficiently. And I do thank you very much for your cooperation, and I do appreciate you being here and taking an interest in what's going on in this, in this community. So, thank you very, very much. So, hopefully, we won't have long drawn-out meetings. We'll go ahead and get to our points and we'll move, move along. So, with that being said, if we could have Jason come to the front and lead us in our invocation? He's not here. Okay. Danny, would you like to do?
Father Lord, we thank you for this day, and we thank you for all that you've done for us. We thank you, Lord, for sending your son so that we can have eternal life, and we thank you for the Christmas season that that represents. And we ask now that you be with us as we go through this meeting, that you make sure, that you help us to have everything that's done, that's done in your interest and then in your will and in the best interest of our citizens. And we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome again. Do we have any elected officials in the audience? Seeing none? Okay. The meeting is called to order, and so we would like to consider any additions or deletions to the agenda. Mr. Sunday?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We do not have any additions or deletions on this agenda.
Okay, can we have a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Any public comments? Is there something that you would like to discuss that you will not be here for that is on the agenda today? Or the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none. All right. Anything to be removed from the consent agenda? Anyone have anything they'd like to remove?
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I'd like to speak about the AI with the planning department, if I can do it at this time or another
We do need to pull it, just in case.
time?
Okay, we'll pull it. Okay. We'll pull item number fourteen from the consent agenda for further discussion. Can you hear me?
We're pulling item fourteen from the consent agenda.
For further discussion. Anyone, anything else? Okay?
Motion to approve the consent agenda minus item fourteen.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, Mr. Sunday?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If the board, okay, never mind. If the board would like, we'll go ahead and take up item number fourteen, which is a request to approve and authorize the chair to sign the contract with Quantum Partners LLC doing business as SwiftGov for AI review support for the planning department, uh, planning and development review.
Okay. Mr. Carpenter, would you mind coming up and explaining what this is and what benefit it will be to the county?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Matt Carpenter for the planning department, C-A-R-P-G-N-T-G-R. Today, we're asking you to enter into a contract with Quantum Partners doing business as SwiftGov for an artificial intelligence review support tool for the planning department. This would greatly aid us in expediting reviews, providing additional consistency, and improving the planning process.
Any questions?
Yeah, I spoke with Mac on this the other day. It's not that I'm totally against it. I just didn't have enough time to really see what was behind this and maybe even look at some examples. I mean, this is a substantial amount of money to go into something without me, you know, feeling it, tasting it, touching it, you know, actually seeing it work and how it's going to work. I, I know from what you told me, it would, would do all that for you. It's just, you know, I'd like a little bit of time, maybe just to kind of, you know, look at it and maybe go over to your office and kind of just walk, walk me through how it would actually work. I'm not a planner and never played one on TV, so I want to see what this would do to benefit us in person.
This is something that we've been working with this particular vendor for quite a number of months on.
And I apologize. I'm the rookie up here, so I'm kind of late in the game, so.
And we tentatively had a kickoff schedule for January second, sent it to the board approving this today, but we'll be happy to defer that.
And I'm not totally against it. I just want to know a little bit more about it. That's all, that's all, Mac.
What is the cost?
Uh, the initial onboarding cost is twenty thousand dollars. This is a budgeted item that we had approved in the budget. And there is a monthly review cost. We anticipate that will be absorbed through development review fees.
Do we know what that monthly use cost is?
Uh, it'll be on how much we use it.
Okay.
Essentially, for each major development, it's going to be a thousand dollars. But we'll get to run the, run the model as many times as we need to for that same price.
Is this, is this a cost that's going to be passed on to the developers, or is it a cost that we will absorb?
I would expect that it's going to be some of both.
Excuse me, I need the audience to not speak. You, you cannot hear?
I'll try to speak a little bit louder.
There you go.
We expect that this cost would be shared.
Okay, shared between the developer and the county?
Yes.
Do we know how we're going to, what kind of share point we're going to have?
Uh, we're developing that right now. It's going to take some time to train the model. This is not ChatGPT. This is an AI model that we would train with our documents, our conference plan, our land development code, and whatever other policies the board has that would be applicable to development review.
And you, you said that you've been working with this company for a couple of months, but we haven't used them prior, correct?
No, ma'am. We haven't used them. Uh, this is a sole source provider because this is a unique product that would be developed specifically for us.
Do any other commissioners have any questions? Yes.
Do you have any issue with waiting till first meeting in January? I mean, I know it puts you back a month, but would that be acceptable?
We can't move forward without the board's support, so we absolutely defer to the board's schedule.
I would move, we continue this till January fourteenth again, and ask Mr. Carpenter to make sure you talk to Mr. Curry and anybody else that wants to talk.
Absolutely.
Right, and I, I would like to have an in-depth conversation about it as well.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Glazow. I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue this to the next meeting. All in favors, any, any comments from the audience? All right, Ms. Lightner? This is just, this is just to continue this. That's all it is. Okay, okay, thank you. Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. It will be continued. Okay, Mr. Sunday?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, the next item is a request to approve and authorize the chair to sign the exercise of the sole option to renew contract number zero-two-one-zero-three-nine, and that's the agreement for state lobbying services with Heffley and Associates. That would extend the current contract for a one-year term effective December twentieth of this year through December nineteenth of twenty twenty-five, and at that point, we would go back out. At that point, we would go back out for an RFP.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a sec, we have a motion and a second to approve the request to approve the chair to sign the, the exercise of sole option to renew contract zero-two-one-zero-three-nine, Agreement for State Lobbying Services with Heffley and Associates Incorporated, extending the, extending the term of the contract for one year effective December twentieth, twenty-four through December nineteenth of twenty-five. So, we're extending one year the contract that we currently have. Would anyone like to speak to that?
Madam Chair?
Yes?
The last meeting that this brought up, I appreciate the board extending the grace to allow it to come here. I did have time to speak with Kelly. I was given the numbers, and I have no problem with this at this point.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
I'm sorry, we've moved on to the next item.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is a request to reschedule the January twenty-third land use meeting, January twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, to January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five at nine AM in the Freeport BCC boardroom.
Why are we having it in Freeport?
We're having it in Freeport because our south, this, this room and the boardroom and the Funiac are occupied for early voting.
Okay, that, that's for Jan-
January twenty-three to January twenty-one.
Okay, I have a conflict.
Can I, can I say something?
Sure.
Why are we moving it?
Well, the reason I requested to move it is because I will be in commissioner training in Gainesville during that time.
I mean, we've never done that in the past, and I missed meetings because I was in that same training, so did you.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's, it's a training that I've gone to phase one and phase two, and this is phase three of the same training. It's, it's a two-day training in Gainesville, and it's, it's to make me a better commissioner, and, and you all had opportunities to do it. And I know that meetings have been changed, times have been changed. We do it all the time.
Times have been changed, but it's because of conflict with, with the, the judges or the, you know, things of that nature. But, I mean, we've all had to miss meetings at one time or another, and I've always assumed that if we had a quorum by state law, we had to have our meeting.
I'm simply asking that you be kind enough to change the date so that I can attend this meeting. That's all. If you don't want to do it, that's your prerogative.
But I mean, if Commissioner Drake has a conflict, and this doesn't do us any good.
I don't have a, I don't have opposition to changing the date as a courtesy. I mean, I think, I do think we should do this very rarely. I mean, because it, you know, we, we are going to have conflicts at some, there are going to be things where we can't show up at certain times for. But I, if we can work it out amongst ourselves, I don't have any problem with that. But I do have a conflict on the twenty-first.
What about the twenty-eighth?
Twenty-eighth is the regular BCC meeting? Could you, I mean, so you, we could attach it. That, that's an option.
That, that's an option.
Would that be amenable?
That would be fine with me.
Okay.
I make a motion, we change that meeting to the twenty-eighth.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to change the meeting?
Just a second, just a second. I have something. This is still going to be at nine o'clock, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Is, is that, that date going to have to be in Freeport, too? We should be back on track.
Okay.
Let's make sure we give discretion to admin. If the supervisor needs it for some reason or it's still held for secure elections purposes, then at that point in time, it'd be located in the option where it came.
So, we would, I'd make the, I'd amend the motion.
So, I'm being told that it would be here?
Okay.
And we just need clarity on nine o'clock for the land use and then one o'clock for the regular BCC?
Yeah. The twenty-eighth.
The twenty-eighth, yes.
Now, if the land use goes over at the, between nine and one, what do we do?
Push it down? I mean, just?
Delay either, you'll make that decision at that time. You'll either delay the start of your one PM meeting, or you will continue all the land use items till after the end of the one PM meeting. That's what we've done most recently. I would suggest it probably is going to depend on how many items you have left on land use and how big your regular meeting is. Bifurcating the two and splitting them is usually the preferred method, given the scheduled notices you will likely have on your regular meeting. But we can take that up when we see it.
Yeah, if, what I don't want to do is wait for two hours, two and a half hours between meetings. So, if we can word it somehow that it'll happen-
Or as soon thereafter.
Soon thereafter. Okay. Okay.
Did we take a vote on that?
No, we got it.
Not yet.
We got a second.
We've got a motion and a second on the twenty-
Whoa, we got somebody raising their hand.
Okay, let me make sure I've got it clear. We've got a motion and a second to move that meeting to the twenty-eighth of January.
Here.
Here, in the South Walton Annex. Yes, Ms. Lightner, come up. State your name, spell your last name, please.
Randy L-I-G-H-T-N-E-R. I'm not sure if this is appropriate at this time, so I'm just going to make a general statement here, that any major developments happening in Walton County, I don't care what developers, commissioners, or anyone else that may put out, they need to be heard in the section of the county where they're happening. So, if it's on the north, it doesn't need to happen on the south on the twenty-eighth. So, I just want to mention that, that there may be some changes coming up that are going to be on the twenty-eighth, and we would really like to see what's happening on the north end, heard in Defuniac when it's a major, major development.
And I think we're going to, we're going to do our best to accommodate that.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Harris, did you have something?
These two people brought that here and that's it. They came all the way from the Funiac. They can't get a word at CNI. Because you talk loud, but then your husband's not talking on the back porch.
Okay, I'll try to make sure that we all get up in our microphones and we all speak loud. Thank you. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? We'll try to do better. Just raise your hand if you can't hear us, and we'll try to do better. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Sunday, you want to go and move on to the next one? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Let's see. Okay, we had a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The meeting will be on the twenty-eighth of January, right here in South Walton Annex. Okay. Mr. Powell, do, or do you want to come up and bring up your, your issue?
Absolutely. Chance Powell, Walton County Engineering, P-O-W-E-L-L. Item number eighteen under engineering, request approval to award invitation to bid number twenty-four forty-two to the sole bidder, Murdoch Investments, LLC doing business as Griffin Traffic Signals, in an amount not to exceed seven hundred and thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and five dollars for the construction of the signalized project for the US Highway ninety-eight, Church Street Mall intersection. Approve and authorize the chair to sign the contract number twenty-four dash forty-two, just for the signalized intersection, NAMM Highway ninety-eight, just west of three ninety-three intersection.
And it's in the budget?
It's a, yes, it is. It's a paid-for portion, fair share.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. First of all, I want to say thank you very much. I'm very excited that we're going to get this light. I do want to mention that I've seen that some people have said that that's a lot of money for a light fixture or for a signal. I don't believe that it is. I believe that because of what you explained to me at one time, these are all manufactured separately, specific to that particular area. And can you give us a little detail about why it's so costly?
All the signals along ninety-eight, especially within the wind debris zone, are going to be mast storm type facilities. That's going to be the rigid galvanized type structure that you see holding up the lights. Not going to be a strand wire like you see north of the county. They can get away with that up there because of the wind, hurricane zone is not, wind zone is not as high. I think ultimately DOT will be putting those wherever they can, the mast storm facilities. But, um, you know, another thing is, Commissioner, you, at the TPO meeting with me the other day, I think I pointed out to several of y'all, it, it, construction cost, DOT pointed out at that TPO meeting, since two thousand and eleven has almost quadrupled.
Right.
So, that fits right in with, with what I, what I would have expected back in two thousand and eleven and what we see now.
Well, plus, the technology that's in these, that's built into these is costly.
That's right.
So, I just wanted to bring that, put that on the record for the people because I know there's a lot of questions about that. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it, and I'm looking forward to it.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Much-needed light. Okay, Parks and Recs. Wait a minute, I'm sorry. Any, any, any questions? Can we get a motion to approve that?
Already got one.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I haven't been feeling very well, and I'm on some medicine, so please forgive me. I'm a little not with it. So, we've got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Anything from the audience? No? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you very much, Chance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item is under Parks and Rec. It's a request to approve and authorize the chair to sign a lease agreement with Wells Fargo through Beard Equipment. For four pieces of equipment, will be two John Deere precision cut fairway mowers and two John Deere triplex mowers to be utilized at Eagle Springs Golf Course. Are these-
Can you repeat that?
Yes. This is a request to approve and authorize the chair to sign a lease agreement with Wells Fargo Financial Leasing through Beard Equipment Company for four pieces of equipment, two of which are John Deere precision cut fairway mowers, two John Deere triplex mowers to be utilized at Eagle Springs Golf Course.
Thank you. Yes.
I, I have these nineteen and twenty. I have a conflict of interest, and I filed the proper paperwork with the court.
Thank you. Yes.
Is this budgeted item?
Yes, sir. Shane Supple Parks Recreation. Our five-year, previous five-year lease has run out, and this is just a renewal with different equipment, but less equipment. We lease it through the recommendation of Justin at Fleet Maintenance because it's, it's a cheaper way to go and it keeps the equipment fresh. So, at the end of the five-year lease, like right now, the equipment that we just use is completely shot. We would get pennies on the dollar if we owned it. So, we just transfer it to another lease and keep rolling. So, this is actually a little bit less equipment. It is budgeted, yes, sir.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comment? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this? No? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not supposed to vote.
That's okay. I forgot to vote, so I'll just take yours. Okay, four. Pass this with motion of four. Thank you. Next.
Sorry about that, Madam Chair.
Shane, just hang out there for just a moment in case there's questions. The next item is request to approve and authorize the chair to sign a resolution amending the fees at Eagle Springs Golf and Recreation Center. This would be the fees that the board approved back at your December tenth meeting, and this is a resolution codifying those, those fees.
Okay, we need a motion?
I'll motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution amending the fees that we discussed at the last meeting for the Eagle Springs Golf Course.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Um, I would like to add a military discount. I don't know if I can do this now or not, Clay, but there, I thought there's, there was a discount in there for the military.
Do we already do one, Shane?
We haven't before because the rates were so cheap. We just, we didn't do one. But we had discussed doing one perhaps in line with, what we do do, if you are active military and you're stationed nearby and you live in Walton County, we consider you a local. So, we just charge the local rate.
So, what's the discount you're looking at doing?
What's the current discount when we have, as a teacher's?
It's a ten dollar off the membership is our discount for membership rates. That's for county employees and first responders and school board, school members.
I would just, i- if the board would approve, I would like to just add the military to that section with the teachers and the first responders.
We can, we can do that. If we add it into that same section of the exemptions, the resolution will update that. So, the motion would be to, we would need the motion to be awarded to approve the resolution with that change and authorize the chairman to change the amended resolution following legal approval.
But we need that this second, would you be willing to do? Okay, all right. Okay. Any other conversation?
Is that applicable to all military, or is it just for local military?
If, if, we're talking ten dollars, if they have a, a military card, that's what I'm, I'm assuming what we're talking about, I would be in for that. I mean, I don't.
I would even go as, I would even go further and say that retired military-
Correct. Yes, yes.
So, active duty and retired military?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any other questions here? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, Shane.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item is tourism. It's a request approval to award invitation to bid twenty-four dash fifteen for the One Seagrove Neighborhood Beach Access renovation project, and that would be to Three Rivers Construction Company LLC, and approve and authorize the chair to sign that contract, that number being twenty-four dash fifteen, in the amount of four hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars and one cent.
Motion to approve?
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Does anyone want to hear? We have a motion and a second. Does anyone want to hear? Is it Brian? Do you want to come up and tell us a little bit about this?
You didn't think you was going to get out of talking, did you?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners.
Hi.
Brian Kellenberger, Director of Beach Operations. This is one of our neighborhood beach accesses. It was compromised in a storm a few years ago. We built it back temporarily so it could be used by the public, and then immediately did a design and permit effort to rebuild it completely. And we're actually changing the format from a non-ADA to an ADA accessible boardwalk.
Fantastic.
Has some stormwater components as well.
Fantastic.
We had four bidders, low bidders at four fifty-five, two at around seven fifty, and one at one point one. So, this company has just completed a, another project for us, did a good job for us. So, I recommend we approve it.
Any idea what kind of timeframe we're looking at?
Uh, it's got a ninety-day schedule. I think we can complete this substantial completion in sixty days. I've asked the contractor to get it done before March first, so the public can use it.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Okay. Any comments from the audience? Seeing none? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Motion passes. Appreciate it. Okay, we, Melissa, you have nothing, I see. And Mr. Atkinson, you have nothing?
Merry Christmas, happy holidays, and Simone, she has to get there on the agenda.
Melissa's welcome to chime in, I'm sure she feels the same.
Thank you very much. Dan Curry.
Thanks for not leaving, Shane. Is Brad out there too, or no?
He's in the back.
Oh, is he? Okay. Okay, this is, I just wanted to give everyone an update on, from our first, or my first meeting, when we decided to do a Phase 1 and Phase 2 with Eagle Springs, and along with a couple other parks, Villa Tasso and Chalkdaw Beach. So, this is primarily an update on numbers to share with the board, on where we're at, what we're going to have left, once all this is done for Phase 2. So, if you look at the first sheet, this would be the ADA Autistic Sensory Playground at 140. And I've put some pictures in here that was sent to me, and by the way, staff has done an excellent job with keeping in touch with me and giving me updates, to include Stan, Matt, Brad, Shane, everybody. Been fantastic. But, that is the ADA park, if you want to take a look at it a little bit, Autistic Sensory Playground. I think we all know what a pickleball court looks like, if you want to go to the second page, so there's no, there's no color pictures for that, folks. But, that's at 140 with two lighted courts. The only thing we're lacking on the basketball courts is the asphalt price. Well, I should have that within a week or so, between these two fine fellows. The price on the sand volleyball is just under 5,000. This is all at Eagle Springs Phase 1. Move on down to the 80 by 120, correct Shane?
Yes, sir.
All right, there's your, there's your maintenance building, and your prices are as follows. You have your concrete that's come in at just under 154. Plumbing and electrical's in-house, but Brad has sent me some pricing late last night, or this morning, I can't remember what it was, Brad. I don't have those numbers in there, but that's materials only, because we're going to do this stuff in-house. Correct, Brad?
Yes.
Okay. Bathrooms, materials only 20,000. Metal building, 542, that is the foundation. Correct me if I'm wrong, Shane, the foundation, the building and insulation.
That 542, you could back that 153 concrete price out, that would include that price as well.
I thought in the sheet, it just said foundation. But, we were talking parking lot, though. I thought the concrete was parking lot and asphalt.
Okay, yes, sir.
Okay. Check me. Check me, check. So, total for Phase 1 is just a little over a million. The balance remaining out of the 1.4 that we had left over for just the maintenance building would be 400,000. I think the numbers are pretty close with that, so the next part of this Phase 1 would be to sit down with staff and get our little rulers and pencils out, and kind of show where we're exactly putting all this. Where is the building going? Where is the park going? What's got to be taken away? The parking area, so on and so forth. So, that's, I just want to update everybody on that, that we probably all need to get together, Brad, Shane, Stan, Matt, everybody, so we can put it on paper. Which leads us to Phase 2. Don't really, I'm not in a hurry on Phase 2, other than maybe, you know, maybe that land lock, maybe get a decision on that, those eight lots. But, what we have left over on Phase 1, we will roll over funding-wise to Phase 2 for a couple ballfields. But, there's a lot of working parts with that, including getting with Jill with the school, with Walton County Schools, and sitting down with her, because there's some land that's going to be meshing in between each other. So, that's why there's really no update on any of these at this point. I really want to get Phase 1 going, and then see what kind of money we actually have to roll over to Phase 2. I did get with staff again with Villa Tasso Park. The large picture is the current swing situation and playground equipment. I've asked to update that park with the following, and there's the, there's the price. So, I think we're all good to go with that. Right, Shane, Brad?
It's been ordered, yes, ma'am.
All right. Chalkdaw Beach Park. That boardwalk has been in that, if you want to scroll down a little bit to show the pictures. But, that boardwalk has looked like that since 2017. Instead of recreating the will and everything else, the piers or the piles are already there. I've asked engineering, I believe I've even asked Clay, everybody, do we need any additional permissions to put back what was already there, so the folks can enjoy the park again? And the answer was, no, we don't need anything else. So, part of this rehab would be to put that boardwalk back. And Brad gave me a price, I believe somewhere around 6,000 in materials?
Oh, right at 5,000.
Okay, all right. The restrooms need a little help, and I had suggested, and I'm not going to give the company's name, but there is a product out there, because there may be other products that are cheaper. But, there's a product out there that fights graffiti, that is almost like a dry erase board, and I believe you can get different colors now. So, I would suggest to use that type of paint to battle the graffiti and repaint the bathrooms. And I think Shane and Stan suggested the beach colors. I don't care, just needs to be, you know, looked at and redone. Along on the boardwalk is the bench seating, because a lot of the, I just went to a potluck at Chalkdaw last week, and they really enjoyed that park prior to 2017, just sitting on the benches, looking out over, so I wanted to carry on those benches all the way down through the new boardwalk. The playground equipment that was ordered in July has arrived, and it looks like the installation of the new playground equipment is January 6, correct?
Yes.
All right. And I drove by there the other day, I don't know if I told you guys, and you had your crew out there, and, you know, little pipe dream, I was hoping we could salvage something out of that, but they told me all the screws are just rusted and everything. So, the only thing that they probably could do something with is the plastic slides. If we're going to spend more money on saving something than to just buy something new, then I don't want to do that. All right? I would suggest not doing that. The only other thing that I didn't put on here that Brad brought to my attention was the Portland Community Center, and if you could speak on that a little bit and catch everybody up on that.
Well, it's in pretty dire shape. It's about like what Glendale was like, so we would need to tear this thing all the way down to the foundation, just to see what kind of termite damage could be in there. We have $40,000 that's in the budget now for that building, but we're not, we don't believe that's going to be able to cover what all we need to do to that building. So, we really just need some direction on how far do we want to go with that 40,000? Is that something we want to do?
And my suggestion would be, I would want to throw $40,000 worth of Band-Aids, just to, you know, just to make it last another year or so. Is there any way you could get me some numbers that I could bring back to the board and say, hey, this is the best-case scenario, and it's going to cost X? I mean, I have no problem with any, if I may wreck plat fees or anything that I have available to help out in this. They said they already have $40,000 there, so if there's additional money and I have it, I have no problem with trying to get this fixed. A lot of these projects have been this way for a long time, and it's time to get them fixed, so.
We can do some exploratory surgery on that building and start tearing a few boards out, just to see exactly how bad the damage is.
Give me, give me a medium and a high number that I can bring back to the board and discuss.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just to add to that, Brad's crew did an exemplary job on Glendale. We, they came in way under budget, and they, the building is beautiful, and I have every confidence they could do the same thing at Portland. And Portland is a historic building, it's a one-room schoolhouse. And I think, I think they could get in not much more than the 40, if that's what you're wanting to do, and if they'll bring you back some numbers, I don't see why you couldn't move forward on that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Fantastic. Any other comments? Did you want to make a motion on that? Do we need a motion for anything?
I think I just wanted to direct staff to bring back numbers. Do I need a motion on that?
No.
No?
No, that's just general direction. You understand the direction?
Yes, ma'am.
They do?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you both.
We'd like to see these things moving forward, good deal. Okay. Commissioner Gladwell, do you have anything?
Other than to wish everyone a happy birth, I mean, not a happy birthday, a Merry Christmas.
Well, Jesus.
It is, that was my first announcement, is just to invite everyone to the celebration of the county's birthday, which is, the actual, the actual date is December 29th, but we're celebrating on Saturday, December 28th. In Dufuniac, there's a parade, there's some live music, and there's some fireworks. We're planning on a nice 200th birthday party, so everyone is invited. We hope to have a good time, and hope that all of you will attend that. I would also like to announce that at the last cabinet meeting, the state of Florida approved the purchase of the Upper Shoal River, the, what's known locally as the Permenter property, but that is about 2,400 acres. That would be the 176th new state park in Florida. So, we're going to get a state park in North Walton County, and that's exciting news, and I wish Jeff Talbert was here, but I do want to publicly say, commend him, because Jeff Talbert has been working on this for probably three years, and a lot of it was done behind the scenes, and he didn't get a lot of pats on the back for it, though he deserves, if everybody, anyone who sees him, he deserves the pats on the back, because this project probably wouldn't have happened without Jeff Talbert. So, but anyways, I thank the governor and the cabinet for buying that property, and that's a big win for North Walton County. So, we look forward to having a state park to go to before long. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for that update. Appreciate it. Commissioner Drake, do you have anything?
Nothing at this time.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes, Madam Chair. Just to wish everyone a happy holidays and a happy, Merry Christmas. You got it in my head, I can't get it out. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and just, I'm very excited about this park, and Jeff has worked really hard on it, so please give him the credit when you see him. But, also, just be safe out there. We have way too many deaths here in the holiday season, so be safe and watch out for fellow drivers. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, I have a couple of things, just for information purposes, really, I'm not asking for any motions at this point. I just wanted to kind of let everybody know that one of the things I'm thinking about is, and I've brought it up before, and I really think that we're at the crucial point where we really need to do this, but I didn't want to just slam it on real quick. I wanted everybody to have an opportunity to, especially with new commissioners on board, to kind of absorb it and take it in and decide what they wanted to do. But, the business tax receipt, just about every county in the state of Florida has it, and so does Freeport and Dufuniac Springs, but the county does not have it. And most of our other offices, the sheriff's office, the fire department, the tax collector's office, all these other offices are very much in favor of having this, because we don't know what's going on in our county. We don't know what businesses are in our county. It's kind of like a free-for-all, and if you're a first responder and you're going into a place and you don't know what it is, I mean, that could be very, very dangerous. So, I just want to let you know that I'd like to bring up some different thoughts, ideas about it. I know there was a problem with the fact that, the fact that it's called a business tax receipt is a problem, because it sounds like, you know, it's a tax, and nobody likes a tax, and I understand that. So, we're trying to see if maybe we can work around ways to where it's not going to cost the business owner anything, but you have to file by a certain date, and then if you don't file by that date, then it would be a fine, and maybe that's what would be able to contribute to running the program. So, those are just different ideas I wanted to put out there and let you all think about, and I'll bring it back at a later time, but that's, that's one of the things that's on the agenda, as far as I'm concerned.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would just like to point out, the reason this is called a business tax is because the statute that authorizes it says local business taxes. It is a tax, and I don't want anybody playing word games that this is not a tax on businesses. And I think at a time when we just elected a president who ran on lower taxes and less bureaucracy, imposing another tax on businesses and imposing more bureaucracy is not in the direction that we're supposed to be headed. And I, we, this county enacted one of those things in 1972, and it was apparently, although I was in elementary school, it was apparently so onerous that in 1974, the Board of County Commissioners passed a resolution that forbids business taxes. So, if, we would have to undo that first, but this is a business tax, a tax on businesses, and it's, I think it's inappropriate.
Okay. Well, let, let me just say that, as I stated, we were not going to charge, last year, it was a $25 a year. I don't think that is a big deal for a business that's making good money, to pay $25 for a whole year. I understand that they don't like that, so that's why I was going to see, look into not having the fee, which you wouldn't have the fee, but it still gives our fire department, our police department, and everyone else, the ability to know what they're walking into. Now, if you don't, if you want to go and just be like haphazard, and nobody really knows what's going on in this town, in this county, and everybody just kind of does their own thing wherever they want to, but I, from what I gather, from the people I talk to, that's not what they want. You know, we've got to have some order in this, in this county. And this used to be called an occupational license, that's what it used to be called, and I had one in, in Okaloosa County in 1995 for several years, and, and as I stated earlier, I believe, I could be mistaken, but I believe, and the last time I checked, every other county in the state of Florida has this license. Now, why in the world would everybody else have it if it wasn't of benefit to the citizens of their county? So, I think that you, as citizens, really would probably appreciate it once you saw that, what it did. It's not a burden on you, but it's, it's a way to know what's going on in this county. Okay, you can laugh all you want to.
It's a burden. It's a tax.
If you're not paying anything, it's not a tax.
How, then how, look.
Excuse me, aren't you the one that wanted us to get a tax not long ago? I mean, weren't we, didn't we ask that tax?
Hold on just a second. I hate to talk about this now, but I think your next item is about having vendors at Legion Park, and three months ago, you were putting out RFPs to get vendors to Legion Park. So, I mean, give me a break.
Okay, please, in the audience, please refrain from clapping, yelling, and all of that.
I really didn't want to get into this at Christmas, however.
Bring it on.
This is still a tax, and all you're doing, all you're doing is creating a scenario where people who are good people are going to be, could be breaking the law. And to say we're going to have a free, there is no free lunch. There is absolutely no way that you can have anything free, because anything we do, the tax collector's going to have to do, have to manage, and they are going to have costs, and we're going to have to pay for them costs. Now, either we're going to eat it out of the general fund, or, but, I mean, I thought two weeks ago, we were raising taxes, or fees, or whatever you want to call them, to, because we couldn't, we had to have everything income-neutral. So, if you're going to have this income-neutral, it's not going to be $25, it's going to be well north of that. And so, you're going to be charging a tax. be well north of that, and so you're going to be charging a tax. If, for what? So, we can add more people and add, uh, more bureaucracy, so that we can charge real estate agents and, and umpires and all sorts? This stuff, an occupational tax, that's, this is, this is going to hurt people who don't even have a brick-and-mortar business. There is no justification for this, and all it is, is just adding bureaucracy and adding, uh, imposing hardship on our citizens. We haven't had one in 50 years, and I think we've done a pretty decent job of managing our businesses in 50 years. I don't think we need it for the next 50 years.
Well, apparently, I don't think you really understood what I was saying. I said that it would not be a fee, is what I was looking at, to not have a fee, to that if you didn't file, like, but I have talked to the fire department. They are absolutely 100% behind this. I've talked to the sheriff's office. They are absolutely 100% behind this. The, the tax collector's office, they are behind it. There are several offices in this county that are behind it, and they too don't understand why this board can't get past it. There, I don't understand what the real reason behind not having this is, but obviously, there's something that's hanging this up.
Well, I've talked to the sheriff's office, and I've talked to the, uh, tax collector, and I get a different statement from them.
Well, we'll just have them all come here the next time we bring this up and let them explain to you.
If the fire department wants to implement, let them implement it, but I don't think we should be putting more taxes on people right now.
I'm not talking about the tax. It's, that's the name of what it is, but we're not going to be billing anybody.
But if, who's going to enforce this, and how, are we going to get volunteers, really?
Volunteers for what?
To enforce it. If you have, if you're going to have, uh, Corman and his people out there doing this, we're going to have to pay somebody. It's going to cost money. There, there is no free lunch. It's going to cost money.
Well, as I said, I wanted to bring this up so that we could have a healthy discussion, and then we could come back and, and, and do something with it, one way or the other. There are five of us on this board, so we'll bring it back at another time, but I just wanted to not just blast it out. I wanted us to be able to have a discussion about it, so thank you for your comments. Okay, moving on. I have the--
Madam Chair, may I say something?
Yes.
I agree with Commissioner Gladwell on this. First of all, we're going to have to--
Yeah, please speak into your microphone.
Undo the resolution from the 70s, and, uh, I, I will be talking to the sheriff and find out there. I know the fire department has wanted it, but I will be talking to the sheriff and the tax collector's office also, but we can bring all this up at another time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay. This, don't need comments, because we're not doing a motion on this. But I will give you three minutes if a couple of you want to talk for three minutes. Yeah, they could.
Can you bring it up under Citizens' Comments?
Uh, can I just ask you to wait and bring, and bring it up under Citizens' Comments, so we can move along and get towards the end, and then I'll have you back. It's just another few minutes. Thank you very much. The other item is, is the boat vending, and I've gotten a lot of comments both ways, on both sides of the house with this, and what I wanted to do is, I wanted to bring it out to be transparent, so that we'd all be on the same page, we'd all know what we're doing, and that we are not sitting here in March trying to figure out what we're doing when the season hits. So, we've got to hit it face-on, and I know that there have been, I believe, five different items that have been brought forth to staff on options that this board could take and, and consider. So, I'm sure we'll have a lively discussion up here on this one as well, but, um, I want to have that ordinance in place, not later than, than February, so that we'll, so that we all know what we're doing, and we don't have to question it.
Wait a minute, Madam Chair. We haven't even voted on this, so how can we have that ordinance in February? This is, unless this is a motion, you said you just wanted--
No, I'm not, I'm not bringing a motion, but I would like to have something done by February, so we're not sitting here in March trying to figure out what we're doing at these launches.
Well, I think at the last meeting, if I'm not mistaken, and correct me if I, I'm wrong, but I thought we agreed to have a workshop on, on the, the beach--
I believe there were a couple of workshops.
But we said to have another one. Brian, is that correct?
I believe what they actually, what the board instructed was for--
Staff to have a workshop.
Staff could look at doing a workshop. I believe staff indicated they didn't feel another public workshop was necessary. I think the intent was to look at doing a workshop with the BCC, not the public. The public is giving every one of you and staff every comment I think they can ever give, and that's not, so we won't take more.
You've got a lot of people on that back row that look like they're ready to talk.
And so, I think we--
Well, there's no motion going to be made.
I know, but you're just, you're going to allow the people on the business thing to talk. What I'm saying is, this thing's not settled. These people have not all had their say, and we need to have a staff workshop. That's what the board agreed on at the last meeting, and let these people have a, have a chance to talk.
Madam Chair, when he's done, I like--
We've beaten this horse to death. But it's, it's still not settled. These people back here on that back row, they came here to speak. We're not going to have a motion today, so they can't speak. I think we need another staff workshop. I know, Tony, Corman, I'm, I'm killing you out there, but, but we need to have, get this hammered out before it's brought to the board, and, you know, we do have problems with vendors on, at, at Cessna Landing, but the fact of the matter is, we're in the process of fixing all that. We're just going to all have to work together for a while, but this, you know, this, this needs to go, and everybody needs to be there. Uh, we had a work, we had a meeting where there was a very contentious item going on, and not one person from the other side came up. So, if you boaters, if you boat owners, and you, you commercial fishermen, and you, uh, all you vendors with the boating industry, if you don't show up to meetings, you get what you, you know, you're probably going to get what you don't want. But this is not settled. This is not ready to be voted on, and I would request that Mr. Corman and his staff have another public, public meeting.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Curry.
Looks like I'm, uh, it's the fourth quarter, and there's two minutes left in this one, and I just got into game, so I haven't had a chance to discuss any of this, other than the folks that have been calling me. Um, I have a few ideas, uh, of my own. Instead of cutting everybody out of everybody's park, I, I'd like to find a balance. Um, and what is that balance? I have a few ideas that I would like to suggest. I don't know if this would be the right time, but they would consist of getting with Matt, with the TDC as well, since all that funding into that park is TDC funds, correct?
That's right.
So, I, I would, I would like, uh, just to shoot one idea out there, is possibly have a, a cap on so many vessels that go out of there per vendor, and you would have an attendant that is paid for by TDC funds to monitor that. Uh, everything that I've heard from people coming in, it's crowded this way, it's crowded that way. Well, I pay taxes. Well, I pay taxes. I'm trying to find a balance, and that's what I would like to sit down with staff to do. I, I don't want to, I don't want to say you can't put your boat in there, you can't put your boat in there. I mean, everybody in this room pays taxes, and we're all, um, should be able to use the parks, but I don't think it would be fair to have a vendor with 20 vessels while I'm sitting there with one, trying to get mine in there. Is the cap idea good? I, I don't know. That's why I would like to have the opportunity to get with staff and, and suggest some of these ideas and see where they go. That's all.
I think that's, I think that's good. I think that we ought to, um, that's why I wanted to bring this about, so that everybody could talk about it and decide. A couple of things I wanted to say is, these are public ramps. They're not commercial ramps. They're public ramps, and they are for the visitors as well as, as the pub, as the people, the residents that live there. Um, any, any visitor can use the launch for their personal boat, their jet skis, whatever. And I have found out that according to Ocalusa County Code Enforcement, at least four or six of the boats that launch in Walton County go to Ocalusa County to pick up their people. So, there are a lot of things I think that we need to look at, and so is there any more discussion that, anyone, go ahead?
I agree with Commissioner Anderson and Commissioner Curry, um, that we need, uh, we need a public workshop that is well advertised, that all the concerned stakeholders can come to. One of the things that I do think we need to ask Mr. Kellenberger to look at is something that has come up in these discussions that I was not aware of, and that's that apparently there is some problems with Pilcher Park that, um, make it dangerous at certain times of the year to launch a boat there. Well, uh, that's a county park, and if there is a, uh, safety problem in a county park, we need to see what we can do to address it. And so, I would think, I would ask that Mr. Kellen, we, we all maybe give direction to Mr. Kellenberger to, um, at least take a look at it and bring us back a report on what the true condition of Pilcher Park is, because I've heard that it's everything from a death trap to, um, that it's unsafe, that it can be unsafe. I want to know for sure, so is that all right with everyone?
I, I think that's a good idea, because I've heard the gamut too, but I've heard that it's, it's perfectly fine, and then I've heard that it's, it's dangerous, so I don't know. So, I think that's good to find out. So, Mr. Kellenberger, if you could check that out and let us know, but also-- Come to, come on up.
It's nice to have somebody that's got the answer already.
And while, while he is approaching, let me say this, with regard to timing, if we aim for your June, if we aim for that January 28th meeting, we'll have to have advertisements out by the 15th, so any workshop would have to happen between now and realistically the end of the week of the 10th. Um, if the board's willing to have this in Dufuniac, we can do it at your first meeting in February. Based on the March timeframe, I really would prefer we not try to push it to that last meeting in February with the way that's going to fall, just because it's going to get very quick on that turnaround, but, um, if, just be mindful of those two timeframes, and we will gladly have it at one of those two meetings contingent on the staff workshop, if that's the board's direction. Staff will hold a workshop. Once staff's workshop is done, there will necessarily be feedback received that will be incorporated into the ordinance. We can't have an ordinance advertised that hasn't had that staff workshop, so-- Yes, staff is hosting a workshop for the public, is what I'm hearing is the direction. So, we'll probably be looking at the first meeting in February, just looking at the calendar layout we're on now, and I'm seeing head nods, commissioners. That's what we'll aim for, and that'll give us plenty of time to circulate a draft to each of you of what has come out of that workshop, and allow staff a chance to meet with you. So, Brian, I'll defer to you. I just want to have that timeframe set for everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Kellenberger, Redder Beach Operations. Uh, Pilcher Park was designed by a professional engineer. All the components are designed within, uh, Florida Building Code or other codes that address that type of facility, uh, FDOT codes. There are some inherent issues with the park in its relation to the bay, and that is the currents that flow around the end of that point. So, the park is built on the end of an old causeway that was the former bridge, or part of the old, uh, drawbridge, and, uh, during tidal flow, in or out, it does create some currents around that point. It does make it some, somewhat tricky to launch or recover a boat. Is it dangerous to the point where we need to make any corrections? I don't believe there are any corrections we can make to it that would, that would offer up any more, a safer situation. Uh, I understand the argument by the pontoon boat captains. Uh, I used to have a pontoon boat, and I've launched there before. I have a couple of our boats. I use that facility some, mostly use grayed around, but, uh, the current is the biggest issue. But I think the other bigger issue with, we need to really talk about here, is the proximity of our boat landings to the preferred destination of the pontoon rentals. And if we can talk about this stuff on the actual topics or the merit of the discussion, we can get somewhere with this discussion. If we don't want to talk about the merit of the discussion, we're not going to get anywhere. It's my personal opinion. I'm sorry I got to get a little aggravated about it, but we've been talking about it a long time. Bottom line is, is Commissioner Johns, you're correct. It's a public park. Everybody should have equal use of that park. Right now, we have some congestion issues. I've met with a few of the pontoon captains and some other boat rental captains, and I've expressed what I think the impacts are. I've also expressed what I believe would be an internal fix or a self-regulation fix, and maybe that needs to be brought up in our future workshop. The idea of an attendant has been floated for several years. I've asked for attendance at regional beach accesses, at our bay parks, and all that. Uh, I think it has some merit. Uh, if you have somebody there in uniform that has some authority, people tend to stay in bounds more than they don't, more than they would if there's not somebody there. And so, all of that has merit, but let's talk about it, and let's fix it. Let's make a decision and fix it.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Brian. I appreciate that.
I'll do some more research on that.
Okay. Thank you. So, what is the date?
It will be the--
Depending on when staff holds that workshop. It will either be held at the January 28th meeting or at the February 11th meeting. I'm expecting February 11th for the BCC meeting, just because I don't know that staffs can be able to have a workshop and get everything back by January the 10th, with the holidays and the additional days that are now taken by the state. But that being said, that's when the BCC meeting will be. We'll get the staff workshop advertised, and that'll be noticed on the county website.
Okay, so you all understand that there will be a meeting, that you will be able to talk, and you will be able to, to acknowledge your concerns and thoughts and everything, and that will be, um, it will be coming up. It will be advertised through, uh, Mr. Corman, and you'll be able to have, have your say. Uh, once again, I think this is, uh, not the first time that we've had, gone through this, but we've got to wrap this up. We've got to make a decision, and we've got to put it in writing, and we've got to move forward. We just have to. So, thank you for your patience. We want to do the right thing. That's all. We want to do the right thing, so, um, for, for the county, you know, so, and since there's no motion on this, I'm sorry, but there's no comment, because there's no motion. If I let one talk, I have to let, let everybody talk, and since there's no motion, I just can't, I can't do that.
Well, one also--
I'm sorry?
And also, Madam Chair, as you know, your public policy, your public participation rule, even in public comment at the end, matters that are going to be subject of a public hearing, which this will be, are not subject to comments at this time. Their time to speak will be at the staff workshop and then at the public hearing. So, I know we have people here, but because this will be a public hearing and there is a staff workshop, the time to speak will be at the staff workshop and at the public hearing.
Okay. Do you understand?
So, that is a distinction from the last item we just talked about.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Clay, could you repeat when the dates?
Yes, sir.
How to find out when the date is for everybody out here?
So, county staff will advertise the staff workshops. We'll make sure that's posted on the website. We'll make sure each of your offices know, so that we can make sure that's circulated out. I know staff has received plenty of these feedbacks and calls, and then code enforcement will certainly be aware of it as well. But for the BCC, the public hearing on the ordinance will either be January 28th or February the 11th, one of those two dates, and that's going to be totally dependent on where that workshop falls and getting us those times back, so we can get an advertisement done. So, 1/28 or 2/11.
Madam Chair, where would the location be, do you know?
So-- So-- Go ahead. So, the, the January 28th is scheduled in South Walton that we've had, and the February 11th would be in Dufuniac.
We need to try to make sure we can do it in South Walton.
That's, Madam Chair, that's, uh, that's for, for our BCC meeting.
Correct.
Okay, so, the staff, when is the staff meeting?
We would schedule that for this location.
Okay.
They have not said it yet.
Okay, okay. Does everybody understand that? Contact, contact the commissioner's office or go on the county website.
Okay, um, now, we are, that's all I have. That's all I have. Um, any public comments? Yes, ma'am?
Good afternoon.
Please state your name and spell your last name.
Sarah Day, D-A-Y. Can we get a meaningful update on the survey for the beaches? From anybody?
On the survey of the beaches. Do we have an update?
I did speak with, um, our county surveyor about a week ago.
I did speak with our county surveyor about a week ago, Mr. Scott Rosenheim. They are in the latter stages of that. I do not, the last date that I had anticipated to have it complete was November 1st, obviously that has not occurred. Scott did tell me that they're drawing it to an end, but I don't have a completion date yet, but if you'll leave your number with Mary or Matt.
I mean, I can get in touch with you guys, it's not that, I just want to know where we are, because I keep getting the comment of, "We're almost there, we're almost there." What does that mean?
Let me add to that, Mr. Smith, if I may. Ms. Day, one of the things that has evolved in this process is our continued communication with other entities and agencies, including the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, the Army Corps of Engineer, and related state and federal agencies regarding other projects. We had a staff meeting with those entities and the consulting engineers of those entities on some of our beach projects, the TDC. They provided some additional information that they wanted included in this. What we're trying to avoid doing is having them have to duplicate our efforts. We want as much of what survey the county is engaging in that it needs to be transferable into their efforts. That meeting occurred, and I don't have the time sitting in front of me right now, within the last three weeks, and that information was conveyed to Mr. Rosenheim after the meeting, and I believe that is his current workload, is updating those issues.
Do we have a timestamp date or a deadline for when the drawings will actually be complete?
I'm not aware of that.
How do we get that?
Be up to Mr. Rosenheim to tell us.
Is that where that lands? Do we need to meet with him, or?
I will meet with him, and then we can talk.
And we can convene and talk with him, okay. I think that's very important. You know, this whole beach thing, I think should always be on the BCC agenda, because it affects every last one of us. And Commissioner John...
When we have an update, when we have an update, we will bring that up. But as you've just seen right here, we don't have an update on the survey, really, we don't have an exact date when that's going to be done.
Sure, well, there are other things happening too, and I'm curious to know, we talked about signing a new contract for the lobbyists for another year of contracted services. Are those lobbyists going to be working with the new bill that Dr. Redmond just...
I have no idea.
It appears to me that that would be their main job, because their job is to go to the state of Florida and lobby for things that affect us as community members and us as a county. So my question is, where are we with that? Because we did just sign a new contract, and then we approved it today.
Obviously, I think we're all aware of Dr. Redmond's bill that's been introduced. I'm not going to speak for our lobbyists and what they have or have not done yet, but certainly, any bill that has that layer of application and direct impact on Walton County will absolutely be one of the legislative priorities that we're aware of and looking at, and certainly, we can have the lobbyist address and update with the board, as well as admin, what their role and that's going to be and what their process is.
I think that's extremely important to get that.
We can put that out, we may even have our POI help us put that out.
That would truly be wonderful. My last question is, are you supportive of that bill?
Yes, and can I say?
Sure.
The problem that's going to, we're going to face with that, the introduction of that bill, is my understanding is the representative has resigned effective January 1st. Well, the session doesn't start until March, so...
He has sponsors.
Well, that's why, that was, I haven't heard names.
It's a sponsored bill, so if he has sponsors, it can move forward, even if he's resigned from that position.
Have those sponsors been announced?
Yeah, I believe they were.
Okay.
I would love, if you could email me who they are, I'd love to know.
I will surely do that. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
They're just asking for the sponsor names and asking for her to email the sponsor names to them. Anyone else like to speak?
Yes.
Please state your name and spell your last name.
My name is Scott Risher, R-I-S-H-E-R, and forgive me, I'm not good at public speaking. Two issues I'd like to address real quick. We talked about the business tax receipts, right? It's calling it not being a tax. I own an LLC here in Walton County. State of Florida is requiring me to fill out a BOI report this time, this year, every first time, $500, okay? So don't think this, any tax is a big deal to a small business owner such as myself. It is what it is, it's 25 bucks, it's 500 bucks. If I'm late filing that report, it's $500 a day that I'm late. I've even been told it's $10,000 if I don't do it on time, okay? So let's not sugarcoat anything, a tax is a tax, it's money coming out of my pocket, money that feeds my family. So that's all I have to say about that issue. Secondly, I wanted to speak early with regard to the charter boats and the pontoon boats and whatnot. You say I couldn't speak because there wasn't a motion. I wasn't able to attend the previous meeting, but I did go watch the video. Y'all kind of glassed over the whole issue, but just prior to ending that issue, you filed a motion that no commercial activity could occur at Cessna Landing. It was suggested Pilcher Park or Grady Brown, because Cessna Landing is quote unquote "in a neighborhood."
Correct.
Correct? I believe it might have been Mr. Dan Curry or Mr. Gladwell, who leaned over and said, "Miss Donna, Grady Brown Park is also in a neighborhood." Okay? So what we need to be able to do here is make informed decisions. We need to know where these parks are, know what our options are, and I wrote an email to most of you gentlemen and ladies and gentlemen yesterday detailing, in great detail from personal experience, I'm an avid boater, I use Cessna Landing, I use Grady Brown, I use Pilcher Park. Pilcher Park, even from a recreational standpoint, is the most dangerous park you can launch from. Conditions change, you're out on the water, it gets rough, you almost swamp your boat if that water's come, if it changes out of the easterly direction. So, forgive me again, I'm a little nervous. My point being, y'all did pass a motion. Is that, so is that a motion, an ordinance? Forgive me for not being politically in tune with it at all, but as of today, can commercial activity occur out of Cessna Landing? Based on the motion that y'all filed and was approved at the very end of the context of the meeting last time?
It never passed.
You didn't pass that.
So no, there's no, the motion...
I thought I heard it being second. I looked at the video, and it got second.
No, no, because that... I don't know how everybody else would have voted on it.
I'll review the video, because what I saw from that video...
That's what I voted.
Okay, well, let's all review that video, because what I saw was there was talk about having the public workshop, but prior, before that terminated, you made the motion, correct me if I'm wrong, but I saw the video just recently.
The motion didn't go through.
Okay, so there's no motion, so currently there is no...
So right now, what we did was, because there was construction going on at Cessna Landing, they put a stop on it until the construction was done, and that's part of the reason why I'm bringing it up now, because we have to make a decision.
Okay, because I want clarification on that, because what I looked at was, I interpreted the motion to be that there would be no more commercial activity and that it would be relegated to Pilcher Park.
Well, we're looking at different options, and that's why we're having a meeting that we're going to be having.
Can we go ahead and clarify, or let Commissioner Claver say that, I'll just clarify.
That motion, just because a motion's made doesn't mean it passes, and that motion didn't pass, and I'm not even sure if it got a second. But nevertheless, sometimes people don't understand that because of the sunshine law, the only time that the five of us can talk is at this meeting, we have two of them a month. So there are things that are talked about at meetings, and I, none of this is personal, and yes, we had a spirited discussion a while ago, but this is business, and this is the only time we get a chance to talk. But until something, a motion and a second, and it's voted on and it gets three votes, until that occurs, then there is nothing. And right now, Cessna, if it is open from construction, is as open as it's ever been. The only thing that can change that is a motion and a second and three votes. And, you know, we talk about a lot of things at these meetings, and that's a necessity. And, you know, regardless of, but I get calls all the time that y'all did something, and all we did was talk about it. It ain't, and I appreciate you coming, and I agree with most of what you said, but we haven't voted to close Cessna to anybody, and I don't know that, I mean, that's something that'll have to come up, because we did vote to have the workshop. My recollection was, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Cornman, we voted to have a workshop.
Yes, we did. Okay.
Yeah, or two meetings ago, I think it was.
No, y'all voted to schedule a new public hearing on the ordinance, but the direction today was to hold a workshop.
We're going to hold a workshop.
All right, I'll be there. Got one clarification, because I was sworn, I read that, I mean, I looked at that video, and that the motion was to discontinue commercial.
It gets very confusing, but if, to his point, you have to have a motion, a second, and then you have to have three votes to get something passed.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
This is the first meeting I've been to.
It's okay, thank you.
We did go back and view that meeting, and there was a lot of discussion amongst this board. There was never a motion, second, and a vote taken on it, but some of the high points that we took away from that discussion was, there was discussion about prohibiting commercial activity at Cessna and offering up either Pilcher or Grady Brown as alternatives. There was some discussion about raising the annual permit fee for those voting permits. There was discussion about...
Can you hear him in the back?
There was discussion about requiring a livery permit before the actual voting permit was issued, and is that about it?
Not at the Cessna, so it's not going to be Pilcher or Grady Brown, it's about the boat captain's license.
So, and the other thing was the current requirement for a captain's license, even though it does not pertain to, even though it's not required, do it away with that. So those were the high points.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
That's one reason that I wasn't privy to those, I wasn't up here yet, and that's another reason why I wanted to be involved, or at least have my input with the staff or with this workshop. I know I'm coming to the game late, but I think I have some good substantive material that could probably help the situation, or it may not, but I just wanted to have the opportunity to be afforded that, so, thank you.
Thank you both. Yes, ma'am? No, the lady in the back. Sorry, Margaret, I'll get you after the gentleman back over here.
Thank you all for your time, I'll be super fast and then jet out of here, but I think everyone knows this, but it occurs to me, whether it's the boat businesses or whatever, that a good business and a healthy business usually has a one-year plan and maybe a three-year plan, and it's so down to the wire here, I mean, they've got all this off-season where they don't know, do they need to be selling their boats, do they need to be letting people find other jobs? I mean, it's a lot of people's livelihoods, and it's horrifying that it gets this close and not know, and I guess what I'm wondering, my dad said this to me, because I'm very indecisive, years ago, he said, "Sometimes the best decision is no decision." And I just wonder, since the park has been revamped, I don't know exactly how it was revamped, if it makes sense, given how late we are in the process, and that all of these people's incomes are on the line, to see how it goes now with the new layout. I don't actually know much about that layout, so maybe nothing's changed, and shelve this for another season, given how much is on the line for these people, just an idea.
Thank you.
And let's just do remember that all, that these comments are starting to get towards the public hearing, so we need to be careful. I know the first gentleman was speaking about what happened at the last meeting, but we do need to keep this consistent with the workshop, and then what will be your public hearing per...
But I guess, just generally, like, any topic that comes onto your plate, to always keep that in mind, because they don't know how to plan.
That's what we're really trying to catch up and do, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Before you all come up, I want to make sure that you realize that if you want to talk something specific about the boating, the Cessna, anything like that, that's going to be at the workshop, I need you to save it for the workshop. If it's outside of that, the gentleman in the back, come on up, but make sure that you don't touch on any subject that's part of the workshop, please. I need you to state your name and spell your last name, please.
It's about the subject matter expert part of it, I'm not going to go through the whole presentation.
I'm sorry, but we cannot, we cannot do that, that's part of the boating and everything else, is that correct?
It's about, you had asked a question earlier about the safety of those ramps.
And that will be part of the work, sir, that'll be part of the workshop, and then ultimately, it will be part of the public hearing the board has. The board's adopted rules indicate public comment cannot be held on matters which are subject to public hearings.
Okay, well, just let me state something on something else, guys.
On something else, of course.
This is the third time that the can has been kicked down the road. Every time you do this, costs me an airplane ticket back and forth to...
Excuse me, did you state your name and spell your last name?
Bacon, like ham and eggs, B-A-C-O-N.
What's your first name?
Francis.
Francis Bacon.
Okay. This is the third time y'all have kicked the can down the road on this one, all right? Every time you do, it costs me, I'm a resident of here, I have other employment in other places, it cost me an airplane ticket to fly back and forth, this has cost me three days of work in another job, so, you know, I mean, we've got, like the lady said earlier, and I've got livelihood depending on this. You know, do I go ahead and buy insurance for next year coming up? Do I go ahead and apply for another livery permit? Do I, you know, close my business? I mean, this has been going on over a year now. I think we had attorney shipman that started all this business about a year ago, and this is affecting people's livelihoods. I have people that work for me, that it affects them, there's fishermen, there's boat owners, we've got a lot of money invested in this. We need to make a decision, and a decision shortly.
Well, we're already voted to do that, so I think anything beyond that discussion starts to get to the public hearing.
That's, Mr. Bacon, we understand that, that's why I brought this up today, so that we can get this done and wrapped up before the season starts.
Right.
I realize it's a little late, but that, but we're on it right now.
And if you remember the last meeting that we had, I'd come prepared to talk because it was going to be a public hearing on this, and then again, I was told, "No, this can't happen." So, you know, I mean...
Well, I apologize, but on, I'm, as chair, I cannot make a motion or a second, okay? So when I put something under my name, I can't make a motion on it.
Correct.
So anytime that I have something on the agenda under my name, it's not something that's going to be motioned.
So y'all just need to remember...
At least not by me.
People's livelihoods depend on decisions you guys make.
I understand, that's why we wanted to bring it to the light today, so that you realize where we're at. We're still in the, trying to get everything straight. We're trying to make it the best for everybody that we can.
Right, realize, okay, and I just want to say thank you to the four out of the five of you that took my calls on several occasions and have, you know, talked to me, I do appreciate your time, okay?
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair. Sir?
Mr. Bacon.
Mr. Bacon? That's exactly why I wanted this workshop, because I haven't been involved in any of this thus far, so I think I really have some input to put forth on this, but, you know, this is the first can that I've kicked down the road, and I don't really think it's kicking the can, it's finding out what's behind all this and what we can do to fix it as quickly as possible. I just got on the board, so...
Yes, sir.
And I can't use that forever, I know I got a honeymoon period, but the honeymoon period's coming quick.
I realize that you're drinking from the fire hose right now, but, you know, my attorney had talked with Mr. Atkinson before the last meeting and said, you know, what was going to happen at the last meeting was, they was going to put forth a motion to have a workshop, so I didn't show up for that one. I wish I had now, but we didn't, and that motion didn't pass, I guess, to get a workshop, but now we're going to have a workshop, but like the lady said before, we're at the bottom of the ninth inning for us guys that want to do business next year.
We understand, we're trying to move it forward, thank you, though, thank you very much.
I just recently got drafted, so give me a chance to perform, sir.
Okay, Merry Christmas to all of y'all.
Merry Christmas. Next, yes, sir. Make sure the constraints that you're aware of, okay?
Chris Pelley, P-E-L-L-Y. This is more of a procedural question, just kind of trying to figure out how we got to this point, because last year around this time, we had the same issues we had now. We had a workshop, a new ordinance... the same issues we had now. We had a workshop, a new ordinance was drafted, it was voted on, I believe unanimously, with everybody on the board voted for it. And then now, why are we kinda starting over? We never even gave the ordinance a chance for it to take place.
Unfortunately, we're once again getting into the exact topic we'll be talking about in public hearing. And I, I know that's dissatisfactory to the, to everybody, but Madam Chair, I mean, the board's rules, as adopted, indicate that this is an ordinance that'll have a public hearing. Sir, these are comments that are well-taken. They absolutely should be offered and can be offered, but they can be offered at the workshop and at the public hearing. They cannot, by board rule, be offered today.
I'm just trying to figure out how ordinance can be just thrown out after they're passed.
Ask, ask, ask that question at the public hearing, please.
Another thing I'm asking as well, is that we can maybe push the public hearing-
Wait, that's a legitimate, hold on, hold on.
I'm sorry.
That, that's a, that's a legitimate question. It's, it's not, it's not centralized to a singular policy issue. He's asking, I think, in general, if, if-
What happened to the ordinance?
Something is adopted by ordinance, how could it, how could it be cast aside?
This board, this board determines not to enforce it for a period of time, for whatever reason. They can choose to repeal it. The board can choose to amend ordinances. And so the answer is, the board voted after the ordinance was passed, early summer of this year, to abate enforcement of that for a period of time because of certain implementation and practical concerns that were raised after the fact. As the maker of law, the board has a right to toll the implementation and the effective date of law to allow a period of adjustment. And that's what this board ultimately did. So it's not that the ordinance has been thrown out. The board has told the start of that to allow it. So it's no different than if the Florida Legislature passes a law and it starts July 1 versus October 1, and that's what happened here.
I get it. Does that make sense?
Yes. And another thing I ask is, we're all gonna be busy working, you know, between Christmas and New Year's, and kids don't go back to school, I believe, in this county till the 8th. Can we at least have the public workshop kinda pushed back till this, you know, the, the winter season's over, and we can have some, we can all be here?
I think, I think they're not gonna, they're not gonna schedule it during the holidays. I couldn't imagine them scheduling it during the holidays, but you might wanna talk-
It, it will be after the first year holidays at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Alessandra Paolichi, P-A-O-L-I-C-H-I. If, I have to be at work shortly.
Okay.
So I apologize if I'm allowed to speak on a legislative item. I just wanted to, I know we're not there yet, but if I, I was wondering if it was possible for me to make my comments.
Are you talking about the land use?
The item 30 in the legislative?
That is first reading of an ordinance. Technically, we have to be in the first reading.
Am I allowed to-
I'm sorry.
No? Okay.
Do you have comments that you have in writing that you'd like to provide to the clerk that could be made part of the record?
I'm sorry?
Do you have comments in writing that you would like to make part of the record?
Um, I, I do have, not in written writing, but if pen and paper, and I'll write them down, and if you want to do that.
But let me say this. It's also first reading. There has to be a second reading and a second public hearing, so this will not be your only chance to speak.
Okay.
So you're welcome to submit your comments to the clerk, and they'll take them into this record. But then on the next meeting date, with the second reading of issue, I have an opportunity to speak as well.
Okay, so.
Hi, excuse me. I'm DeeDee Mahan, and I'm here to speak on number 30, the Shory Project.
We can't get into these.
But she has to go to work, and so she won't be here for that. So she would like to present her comments now, because she has to be at work at 3:00.
Yes, ma'am, but our rule says public comment has to occur during a public hearing, and this is an ordinance public hearing, Ms. Mahan. So we have to take it during the public hearing.
If you want to write it down and give it to, give it to her, then I, I can read it at the next, during this meeting.
And then she will have a right to speak at the public hearing for adoption, which will be the next meeting. This will not be passed or failed tonight, no matter what. This is not the adoption hearing.
Okay. I will write that down and give it over. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak? Do you wanna come on up, Ms. Harris? Do you wanna go? Either way. Okay.
I, I have a question, just for my own personal benefit. So like, in the instance where that came up about the legislative item, had that, would she have been able to present her comments at the very beginning in the meeting, whenever it was asked, is there anyone here from the public that would, that will not be here? Would they have an opportu, opportunity to speak? Had they brought it up then, could they have been able to do it?
Per your rules, no.
Okay.
Per your rules, it has to be during the public hearing itself. However, the board has waived its rules when it is the final public hearing on an issue before, or the sole public hearing. We have made exceptions in those cases. But typically, when there's gonna be multiple public hearing opportunities, you don't waive those until you're at the last opportunity.
But we could.
You could, the board would have to take that action. But you can do it. It's your rules. Use that one, not me.
Ms. Harris? Would you please state your name and spell your last name for the clerk?
Suzanne Harris, H-A-R-R-I-S. On the, on the, going to the TDC, for the TDC, and I am a bed tax collector, for the TDC to go spend money at boat launches to keep it going, I personally think that's not really the TDC's job, unless the tourists, like that come to my building and pull their boats, are raising hell at me because they can't ever get their boats launched. So I really am gonna ask Brad Drake to be sure that there is a TDC meeting before the public meeting. The TDC board hasn't met in, I don't know when, but there is a TDC board that does like to hear things and like recommendations, and so do the bed tax collectors, like a chance to discuss things with the TDC. So Brad, if you could possibly get the TDC board together, I know that we've had one person on the TDC board resign recently, and we need one from the funiac put on. But the person that did resign, I would like for Brad to be sure that Matt advertises that position, so we can get that position filled, and maybe things can start going back to the TDC board, rather than skipping the board and coming straight to the BCC. The other thing I have is the parking at Seaside. Have we, we talk about parking and paid parking and not paid parking, but I was pretty well informed by people at Seaside that that parking lot is just for seaside employees now. And I really think that when we took that Grady Brown Park, that the parking, or when we had to take it back, because we, of course, screwed it up once again, I think that parking should be for visitors. It should be for everybody. Or it should be paid parking. And if, and if people wanna park there all day that work at Seaside, I agree, let it be paid parking. But I know that Micah from Seaside came up here and offered to buy that lot from y'all. And now we're restriping it. So it's either gotta be a public lot, or it's gotta be a paid lot. But we cannot be, we cannot provide parking for Grayton Beach. You don't provide parking for other businesses up and down here. So I don't see how we can have one park that is mostly employee parking. Seaside has a lot up 38. They can drive up 38. They can park there, and they can ride the shuttle back and forth. But we still do have visitors, and we still have visitors that come to 38 to shop, and to eat lunch, and to do things. And I think that lot needs to be available for either one-hour parking, two-hour parking, or paid parking.
Thank you. Do we have an update on that paid parking?
Yes, ma'am. I can provide an update on that. Ms. Harris, we, I have reached out to St. Joe Company, trying to work through the deed restriction on that piece of property, received word back from them as regards the paid parking initiative, that in concept, they did not have an issue with that, as long as the money generated from that program was reinvested into the community. They did request some mock-up signage of what, what the improvements would look like. I have sent those to St. Joe. So as soon as we receive something back from them, we have an RFP ready to go on the street for paid parking.
Thank you. Anyone, yes, sir, in the back. Oh, I'm sorry, Margaret, you had your hand up earlier. Come on, and, come on. Please keep it in the confines of what we can talk about.
Michael Knapp, K-N-A-P-P. I'm just gonna do something very different, just because I feel like this is what God would want me to do. Yeah. You guys are, make a lot of major decisions that affect a lot of people's lives. And I wanna, I, I wanna take my two minutes left and just pray a blessing over you, if you guys don't mind that. I know it's different, I know it's strange, but it's what I feel called to do at this point, to finish off the year and to start the year anew. So if you guys don't mind, that's what I feel called to do right now. So Jesus, we just come to you right now, and we thank you for the men and women that serve our community. God, I can't fathom the headaches, the nasty emails, the positive emails, the drama that goes through their computer, through their phones, through their offices. It, I, I just can't fathom the stress. And I just pray God that, you know, Solomon, when he was asked if he had anything, if God could give him anything, he could have, he could have everything. I mean, he was Solomon, for goodness' sake. And he asked for wisdom. And as a result, the, the nation of Israel had a lot of peace, and a lot of prosperity, and a lot of hope. And then God, in turn, blessed him personally, because he asked for that wisdom. So I wanna come to you right now, and I wanna ask for wisdom for this group. I wanna ask that you would pour your Holy Spirit onto the, the remaining end of this year, and up until this next year. And we, we surrender Walton County to you, and we want to do your will, because ultimately, we know with that, there's peace. And we just give you the praise and glory, and, and thank you for all you do. And thank you for the gift of Christmas, Jesus Christ. And I pray all this in His name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Yes.
Michael, thank you so much.
Thank you a lot. Appreciate it.
You don't have to do that just here. You can do that at home as well.
Margaret, thank you very much, by the way. Honestly, very nice, very nice. Merry
Hi, Margaret Landry, L.A. N.D.R.Y. I wanted to thank Mr. Atkinson for giving us some extra time to wait on our appeal, but I was just wondering where we stood on the notification for the rezoning for Hunter's Village.
Should have an answer, hopefully, by the end of this week. I've effectively concluded what we've looked into, but I'm waiting on two pieces of written documentation from another constitutional officer to confirm what I need, and I'll be in touch with you about that, Ms. Landry.
Okay. Thanks so much. I appreciate it.
My goal is to get it out before everybody's on break for holidays, so everybody has enough time to make decisions, and we can take whatever actions everybody needs to take.
Well, I appreciate it. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Margaret, and congratulations on your new seat on the ZBOA. Anyone else like to speak? Yes, sir.
Brian McBrum, I'm chief operations for the Walton Tax Collector's Office. And I just wanted to say that I know the discussion about business tax earlier that came up, and business tax is governed by Florida statute, chapter 205, which says the tax collector would collect that. And I just wanted to clarify, that being the case, we're not in favor of the tax, and we're not against the tax. We're here to collect it if this board so chooses to adopt that. And we do welcome meetings, so we could let you know what our costs would be, and what it would take for us to issue, no matter what the cost of the business tax receipt may be, what, what it would take for us to actually perform those duties for y'all. So just wanted to clarify that, that we're here, and we, we look forward to hopefully having some meetings, and this is the course that y'all choose.
Thank you. Do you have any idea what, what that would cost?
No, ma'am. I've been doing a little look this week, since this has shown up on the agenda, and talking to some of our neighboring counties who do it all online, and even that, it's pretty expensive. They, they're working up numbers to get back to me. But they also have to have full-time, even though it's all online, they have three, Okaloosa County, I believe, they told me they have three dedicated employees doing the back office stuff every day. And all business tax has to run from October 1st till September 30th, and we start sell, they would start selling the license July the 1st. So there's about three, four month period there. Very busy. Everybody's doing it. The one thing I have discovered is, we would not have the ability, it would have to be probably very costly for us to enforce it. We wouldn't be able to enforce it. And even with the enforcement, if you read through the statute, there's not a lot of teeth to it. If someone just chooses not to pay it, it could eventually end up in court, civilly. So, you know, there's, there's a lot to look at there, how you would actually get someone to pay it if they just chose not to. So that, as far as the actual costs, I, we welcome the meetings, we all, so we could look at that and see what we could do to, to keep those costs down and perform that service, if that's the direction y'all choose to go.
Okay. Thank you very much. Did you check any other counties outside of Okaloosa?
I've talked to Flagler. Basically, I got the same thing from them this week, that it's kinda leading up to Christmas, a lot of people are not in office. So I have, I did find that out, too. But the, I think Flagler, they do it a little different. They, they break a line item out from our vendor that shows them exactly what business tax costs them that year, and then they submit that amount to the county who reimburses them that way. Their, I think their cost for business tax is pretty low. The one thing I would say, that I was told by everyone I did speak with, if you do this, fight for it to be a flat tax. It needs to be one amount, because when there's categories, at one time, Okaloosa had over 300 categories. It was a nightmare.
How many residents are in Okaloosa County?
I, I don't know that number, ma'am.
Okay. I think they've got about three times more than we do.
They, they did tell me that they think there's approximately, they did tell me, I think there's approximately 20,000 businesses that they're collecting on at this time. So if that helps, I mean, for us, I don't know what that number would be at this time.
Thank you very much for your input. I appreciate that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Can we take a break?
Anybody else wanna speak? Seeing none. I need a motion to adjourn.
Well, it's not a motion to adjourn.
To pol, to recess?
You can recess, if you'd like, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Motion to recess.
Okay.
Okay, the meeting is called back to order. What we would like to do, Mr. Carpenter, to go ahead, do you have some continuances?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If we could, in the interest of time, our consultant, Kristin Schell, has a medical commitment to get to. If possible, could we move the Point Washington Neighborhood Plan item to the beginning of this session?
We will do that with the continuances on the agenda. So let's go ahead and have a motion to do all the continuances and move that item up all as one.
Excuse me, can we do the continuances after this item? Because we are really running out of time and...
I'm not sure what there's really to say on continuances, but that's up beyond.
I think we need to do this for... We need to bring in 31.
Then we need a motion to move 31 to the top of the agenda.
Can we get a motion to move 31 to the top of the agenda?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, let's hear 31, please.
Thank you, Commissioners. This is the Point Washington Neighborhood Plan update. This is an adoption hearing. I'm going to turn it over to our consultant, Kristin Schell, to bring this item forward.
Okay. Hello, Kristin.
Hi, thank you so much. I really appreciate you guys. This is the second final reading of the Point Washington Neighborhood Plan update. As I just explained at the first reading, this is an existing neighborhood plan that the community has worked really hard over the past year and a half to update. And I won't go into details we did at the first meeting unless you have questions. I'm here to answer them. Also, the neighborhood representatives are here as well if you have questions. This does contain substantial rezonings, downzonings, that the neighborhood has voluntarily agreed to, that each property owner has signed a voluntary form to downzone their property, and also expands the boundary of the Point Washington Neighborhood Plan and creates some different zoning requirements, as well as a new tree protection ordinance and a dark sky lighting requirement. And it brings in the pattern book a little bit that Point Washington originally adopted in their first neighborhood plan.
Madam Chair.
Certainly.
This was sent to the state and they did send it back with no comments, correct?
This won't go to the... This will not... The comp plan amendment... We're actually not amending the comp plan. We're only...
Oh, okay.
Well, we do have a land use... That's right, we do have...
Land Development Code.
Yeah, Land Development Code amendment, so we don't have any flume changes, so this will not need to go yet.
Motion to approve.
I have a question.
Okay.
Go ahead, give me one second.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Go ahead, Commissioner Anderson.
I may have missed this, but how many percent of the same... Of the neighborhood signed off on this?
I don't know the percentage, but it was over 20 property owners.
So how many property owners are out there?
I don't know the total number of properties. We have the history of the mailouts probably somewhere.
So we're up zoning or down zoning people's property that may not be for this?
No, no, sir.
No ma'am?
No. He said that, I didn't. So the...
Tony, you changed.
When we began this neighborhood process, the, you know, the discussion occurred about the mixed-use zoning district and the Live Local Act and the changes to the mixed-use district that occurred between when this plan was originally adopted and the 2018 update that we did. And so many of the property owners asked me at the time, could we get out of mixed use? And I said, "You can, but that has to be totally voluntary. The county is not going to impose a downzoning on you," or, you know, and it was explained to them fully, you know, what this means in terms of your development potential, and they were required to sign a voluntary downzoning form that said what district they were going to or from and to. And there was plenty of discussion about those densities and intensities and what that meant. Many of them are homesteaded properties, or they just want to do one subdivision or two for family members, or they have an existing business. And so all of those things were talked about, and they understood exactly what this meant. I think that as a community, they also understood that having that large sort of chunk of mixed use in the center of Point Washington represented an opportunity for a developer to come in and assemble properties, and that was undesirable. The community wanted to keep that unique place that Point Washington is. And Eric's is here, so he can talk to that, and he can talk... He is the one that really, you know, got that form out to people, and then they came and met with me in the office, and we went through... I was very clear about this is what is happening. So nobody doesn't understand that signed that form what they were doing.
Well, I've had several people call me, and they were concerned, and I think, Mac, you and I talked about this at one time, they were concerned that they may want to put an outbuilding on their property. Is that going to affect any of that?
No, sir.
And I told them, after I talked to Mac, that y'all said it wouldn't. And I just wanted to get that on the record, okay?
Yeah.
Doesn't mean I'm against this, I just wanted to get it on the record.
Yeah. If they didn't sign the form, their land use change is not included in this.
Okay.
I mean, this was totally voluntary.
Okay.
Nobody was forced, the county didn't recommend, we didn't push anybody...
But we don't have a percentage. I mean, I would hope there was a lot of people at the time.
There's a map.
Is that percentage of both?
Uh-huh.
Right there.
Well, yeah, well, that was how many voted in favor, 86.8 voted in favor of the plan. But he's asking the percentage of how many people... How many... There was like 158 property owners, I would say something like that, and about over 20 of them changed their property.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board?
Thank you, Kristin.
No? Any questions from the audience? Any comments? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, Kristin. Mac, can you take us through the continuances?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Commissioners. For that consideration.
You're mixed up there, ain't you, Mac? It's been a long day.
It has.
Moving to the legislative items, the first item listed, the King Small Scale Amendment with rezoning. We have a request to table. This application has been withdrawn.
Application been...
Well, you don't need a table, it's been withdrawn. Is it being withdrawn?
It was advertised for this meeting.
But they're not... But they'll be having repiled?
Pardon me?
They'll be repiling it?
I don't expect that they will in the near term.
Then I would simply just mark it as withdrawn, and the board just shows as withdrawn. No need to table it. I mean, we're not... If it's withdrawn, we can't actually act on it.
Okay, okay.
So just note for the record, it is withdrawn.
Okay. So that is...
So that's what we need to be separate, correct?
Yes. Hold on, what, do we just get new information?
No.
Okay. So we'll treat that... Just go ahead and treat number 25, show it as withdrawn by applicant, no action by board.
Can we do... Go ahead and do the quasi-...
We're going to go through the rest of the continuances now. We have several.
Continuances?
We're going to do all continuances together unless they're summed to different dates.
Okay.
The next item, the Old Seagrove Neighborhood Plan, we're asking that to be continued, the first reading of that to be continued to January 28, 2025. Reschedule meeting. We will be bringing some alternatives for the board to consider at that meeting, based on the discussion at the last hearing of this particular item. I'm sorry, I'll stand a little bit closer.
Hey, Mac. Mac's the reason I've got hearing aids.
But yes, if we could ask for that one to be continued to the rescheduled meeting on January 28th for the first reading, we will bring alternatives for this board to consider with regard to the discussion we had at the last hearing. And let's see.
I think we have 32.
We heard Point Washington under the quasi items. Commissioners, I'll be quite honest, we worked very hard to get these plaits brought to you in a condition that you could approve them so they could appear on the January 1, 2025 tax roll. We have been unsuccessful in getting these ready, and we're going to request that the next three items, the Holly Grove Phase 1 plat, Holly Grove Phase 2 plat, and the Tides 30A plat, each be continued to the rescheduled January 28, 2025 BCC meeting. The first two had issues with me and our water line. The third one did not provide their insertion in time for this particular agenda.
You want to get these, because you want to get these, or you want to get the Blackstone one too?
Are you going to...
Yeah, we're going to get all those. So if we've got all those, and then is the last one, number 36, Mac?
Yeah, number 36, we're going to ask to continue that to a different date.
So let's go ahead and put those dates on the record, and we'll do one continuance right after.
Okay, for number 36, we are going to ask that first reading of the ordinance to adopt the Blackstone Amendment, should the board be so inclined, be rescheduled for the January 14, 2025 meeting.
Is that in Dufuniac?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And that's the reason we're making that request, because of the large attendance at Planning Commission, we're trying to accommodate those neighbors that would be most directly affected, and having that heard in Dufuniac. And if we could tentatively schedule the adoption hearing for February 11, which would be in Dufuniac also, and we understand that this is an exception to that scheduling, that a request is made to accommodate those folks that would be most directly affected.
Motion to approve the continuances with those stipulations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comment?
Just real quick.
Okay.
What... Go over what we're continuing again, Mac.
Just to recap, this would be the Old Seagrove Neighborhood Plan, first reading be continued to January 28.
Can you just do the numbers? Is that what you're looking for?
Well, I haven't gotten the most recent one. If Old Seagrove is number 26, then we would have number 32, number 33, number 34, and number 36.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments from the board? Any comments from the audience? Okay, all approved, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. So those will be continued until the January 28th, with the exception of the Blackstone, which will be continued on January 14 in Dufuniac Springs. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mac.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This would move us to number 27, the Transportation and Mobility Element. This would be the adoption hearing and second reading of that amendment to the comprehensive plan. We have received a no objection letter from the State Department of Commerce. We had the Transmittal Hearing, went to the state, has come back with no objections. It's now ready for your consideration.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any comments from the board? Any questions? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Moving to number 28, the Mobility Fee Administrative Manual. This would be the adoption hearing, and we're requesting this be adopted by resolution for the convenience of the board, to allow the board to make adjustments as they see fit by resolution as opposed to by ordinance. This essentially is the detail on how we operate the mobility plan and the impact fee system. It talks about credits. We work very hard with stakeholders, our other county departments, and our legal team to get this in a condition that it could be delivered for your consideration today.
Motion to approve. I thought you was finished.
I am, yes. I'll stop.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments from the board? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item for your consideration is number 29, the Olney Small Scale Amendment with rezoning. This would be an adoption hearing. It's been reviewed by Stephen Shaw, and I'll ask Stephen to briefly introduce it for us.
Good afternoon. This is the Olney Small Scale Future Land Use Map Amendment with rezoning. This is the adoption hearing. This is a request to approve by ordinance. It is project number FLU 24-000017. It's a future land use map amendment with rezoning application that was submitted by Stephen Willis Law on behalf of Stephen Olney. They're requesting to change the current future land use from estate residential to industrial and extractive uses or lesser category, and to change the zoning district from estate residential to light industrial or a lesser district on 3.85 plus or minus acres. The property is in District 2 and identified by the parcel ID in your staff report. If I could please enter the report, as well as the revised updated executive summary into the record.
So under.
Thank you. I'm just going to touch on a few points here. Staff has found that this application is consistent, excuse me, is complete and consistent with the future land use element of the comprehensive plan, as well as the Land Development Code. In summary, this was approved by the Planning Commission this month on the 12th, and I will give you some breakdown of comments as well.
What was the vote?
The vote was six to zero. That should be reflected in the updated executive summary that you do have in front of you. There was some discussion on the existing use, as well as the location and required preservation, and I'm prepared to touch on all of those issues now. So the existing use was approved through a conditional use process in the zoning, the estate residential zoning, in the 2007 timeframe. It was approved as a nursery, as a neighborhood commercial use, which the zoning allows for. Currently, the owner is looking to provide just a slightly more intense use. He's been approached by some lease... Potential leaseholders that have a different use than a nursery use, and this request reflects some of those requests, I believe. I'll let the applicant speak to that in more detail if you so desire. The location is on 331 north of Freeport. It is within a number of the MIOD overlay districts. Eglin has provided a no concern letter essentially, in keeping with the request to change. And the required preservation that was a part of the initial approval, the conditional use approval, is still intact. Our environmental planner visited the site, verified that himself. So it is consistent with the initial DO and approval. We're just... The applicant's looking to move it into a slightly more intense use category here. So I can answer any questions you may have. If not, I'll turn it over.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Why do we need to go or include extractive uses? I mean...
That is the... So that is the land use, right? It's industrial and extractive uses. The zoning that he's looking to go to is light industrial.
So I guess the question is, is there any chance of them putting a borrow pit or some sort of landfill or anything like that on this property?
If the board approves the light industrial zoning, they would have to come back to do an extractive zoning for that to happen.
So this action today isn't going to do that?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So it's quite broad in the light industrial. Could you just give me a couple examples when it comes to general commercial uses? Target ranges, bowling alleys? I mean, what are we talking?
Certainly, a bowling alley. I think an indoor target range would probably be something that we would look to allow in a general commercial zoning. But there are a myriad of uses from all your big box stores. It certainly wouldn't fit on 3.5 acres, but various retail opportunities, light manufacturing, light industrial, just a lot. I've provided some breakdown of the light industrial uses allowed in the staff report, but I did not get into the detail of the general commercial.
I just wanted a couple examples. That was a...
Yes, sir.
I'm done.
Can we get a motion? Or does anyone want to hear from the applicant?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further comments from the board?
Is the applicant here?
The applicant is here. Would you like to come up? Would you like to ask questions?
Belinda Willis, W-I-L-L-I-S. No, just to say Merry Christmas and Happy Birthday.
Wait a minute, I think he had some questions for you. Ms. Willis, I think he had some questions for you.
That was good. That was good. So what are... I just want to hear from you. What are your intentions with this property for doing it?
It's for a seed company, seeding. They do the seeding along highways.
So you got...
The roads.
You got trucks coming in and out, deliveries?
No, no, just small equipment. A sod roller, a seed blower, things like that, which wouldn't be... Which weren't allowed under the nursery category.
I'm just concerned with stacking up on 331, because it looks like it's...
Well, it's in Dufuniac, it's much further north.
Okay, all right. All right, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you.
And happy birthday to you too.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You looking at me?
No.
Oh, okay.
Don't sit down.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you.
Look at you, let's hurry up.
He wants you to hurry up.
Doing my best, doing my best. Next.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item for your consideration is number 30, the Shory Small Scale Amendment with rezoning. This is first reading of an ordinance for a small scale that's larger than 10 acres. Stephen has also reviewed this. I'll ask Stephen to briefly introduce it.
As Mac said, this is the Shory Small Scale Future Land Use Map Amendment with rezoning. This is a request to approve by ordinance, and it is the first reading. This is project number FLU 24-00002. It is a future land use map amendment with rezoning application that was submitted by Solution Partners LLC on behalf of Blake Shory and LTD LLC. They're requesting to change the current future land use from conservation residential to general agriculture or lesser category, and to change the zoning district from conservation residential, 1 to 2 and 1/2, to general agriculture or lesser district on 36 plus or minus acres. The property is located in District 5 and identified by the parcel IDs in your staff report. If I could please enter the report, as well as the accompanying executive summary, revised, excuse me, executive summary, updated traffic analysis, and the public comment that came in a little later than publication. If I could enter all that into the record, please.
So moved.
Thank you. This project was also heard and approved by the Planning Commission on December 12 of this year. I'll go over some of the comments there as well. So the vote was conditioned that the owner... Or, excuse me, that the land use restriction agreement that accompanies the application be revised to include that, if approved, of course, that the... There would be preservation of 80% of the natural vegetation on site. And I believe that is reflective of the current protections under the conservation residential zoning. I believe that's why that condition was added to the motion, just for clarity. The discussion was centered on the environmental sensitivity of the site itself, and to speak to that, there is a conservation easement that is... That encumbers a portion of the site. So whatever use they end up providing on the site would have to stay out of that conservation easement, just for your edification. There is... There was some limited discussion on the current zoning. Again, the conservation residential land use and zoning provides some extra protections for natural open space that we... It doesn't treat open space the same way as the other zoning districts do. Now, the general agricultural zoning has a similar ISR requirement. It limits your impacted area, if you will, to 30% of the site, but it treats, again, open space slightly differently, where we... It would allow for lawns and sidewalks even, and those rec areas and things to be counted in that open space calculation. The conservation residential didn't. It doesn't do that. So I think I've touched on everything that I wanted to. Eglin provided a no comment response to this application as well. It is in one of their MIOD overlays. Yeah, I think I could answer any questions you may have. If not, I will turn it over.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
General agriculture.
Yes, sir.
In South Walton County. I mean, come on, man.
That is the request. The applicant has demonstrated and indicated a desire to provide a rustic RV park. The only other option in the South Walton planning area would have been a village mixed use or something along those lines that come with a substantial increase in density, which we know the board is not a fan of. So that was the request.
Now, you correct me if I'm wrong, but the way I look at this is, this is just an artful way to get around density. You're talking about 20-plus RV sites on a... That you could only put about 16 houses on. So you're upscaling... You're upping the density and using general ag to do it, which, I mean, I don't see anybody dropping a plow and planting soybeans out here or putting any cows out here. And I think it's... I mean, I think it's wrong to... I think general agriculture should mean agriculture, not RV parks and all this other stuff. If you... I mean, I would rather see a realist... I mean, a realistic... I'd rather see a VMU than... And them... And not be tongue-in-cheek than saying, "We're going to do general agriculture," because this is just an artful way to get around density, in my opinion.
I understand that concern. It would be, to that point, a transitory density that does come with some rather large mobile units, of course, moving in and out of the site.
Which is a bad problem with traffic. You... I mean, you know, we hear traffic problems from this neighborhood all the time. Now you're going to dump a bunch of RVs on it, really?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I was at that meeting, and a lot of people outside and inside were not happy with the RV portion, and I heard Mac come up and say, "We're not here to talk about RV, we're here to talk about X." But the concern is there with the RV portion of this. So I just... There was more than one person concerned with this project based on the RV portion of this, and I think even somebody else stood up and said, "How are you going to make money on 20 RV parks or 20 RV slots?" And somebody said, "We're not in it to make money." Well, I call you-know-what on that too, so that's all I got to say.
Yes, sir.
What's the percentage of wetlands on that property?
A lot. A lot.
I want to say it's... If I'm not mistaken, it was 14 and some change acres.
And leaving 80% of it preservation, which would include all 14 acres of that wetlands, right?
It... Yeah, I suspect that the owner and any engineer would do their best to stay out of it if they're already limited in that capacity to develop the site. They'd want to stay out to reduce any other potential reductions in their development potential by impacting wetlands.
So if they were building houses on here and they were to cluster them into the uplands, how many houses would they be able to build on this property?
So at 36 acres divided by 2 and 1/2, I want to say you're probably in the 20 range-ish.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes. Yes.
Your map, if I'm reading that correct, is this entire property in the flood zone?
I believe the entire property is encumbered by some form of flood zone. There may be some less restrictive zones on there, but there is some... I believe the CAV is also married with the conservation easement, if I'm not sure. But there is some A and some AE, I believe, on site.
Were there notes left from the individual earlier that she wanted read today? Did she leave notes? Did the individual that was wanting to speak earlier, did she leave some notes that she wanted read?
I don't... Not with staff. I don't believe so, no.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments from the board?
I'd like to hear from the applicant.
Okay. Is the applicant here?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hello, DeeDee.
Hi. I do have the notes from the lady that had to leave and go to work early, and there were a couple of other folks here who have to leave and go to work shortly, so I want to try to leave mine brief. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name is DeeDee Mayhann, M-A-Y-H-A-N-N, as of two weeks today.
Congratulations.
Thank you. With Solution Partners, on behalf of the project owners, Paul and Donna Shorey, who are husband and wife, and Blake Shorey, their son. There are six parcels totaling about 36 acres, so I just wanted to clear up a few of the comments, if I might. I'd like to take a moment just to introduce you to the Shorey family's concept of country living at the beach. It is out of the norm, for sure, to have agriculture components south of the bay. But there are already equestrian... It is an equestrian neighborhood with horses already on the property. They have horses currently. They have ducks and chickens and a pond, and they have a garden. They are full-time residents of Walton County and have been for a very long time since they purchased their property, and they wish to remain living on the property for the rest of their lives. They wish to provide horseback riding along with natural trails and develop a very rustic concept of gravel RV pads that will be in... I have a... Jenkins Engineers is the engineers for the project, and they did a very preliminary drawing of a site plan. So basically, the most development will be... All development will be done on the uplands. There are two conservation easements for which they will, of course, remain in place. I can tell you the exact amount of wetlands on the property. And the most of the development will be the meandering roadway that will meander across the uplands to get to the very rustic, kind of tucked-back RV pads on a gravel slab, just so that there's... We've heard a lot of comments about outdoors and wanting to be outdoors more, and the RV parks, and how the state parks are great, and people love the state parks because they're natural. They have natural vegetation. They have buffers and privacy between them. This would be something along that nature as well. I've even tried to rent an RV slot or a camp spot at a state park, and it's a year in advance, you know, before you can get reserved on a spot. So there is a needed... It is needed in this community. They don't want to... I mean, there is a brand-new RV park right down from South Walton Fire District, which I know is on correctly for that, but it's all a paved parking lot, you know? They don't want to pave paradise. They want to leave it like it is and just have a very rustic RV park tucked in, but also boarding and riding and horse trails, of course, separate from the RV park, so they don't counteract with each other. I wanted to mention also about the RV pads will be surrounded by existing trees and natural vegetation, along with continuing the conservation element and the nature, designing a way to avoid the wetlands, no cutting down of the large trees. They agree with the 80% open space. They live there. They want to preserve it. That's why they purchased the land in the first place. They want to have an alternative for families to come and visit and not have to get on 38 or stay in a big home. They want to get off the beaten path, come into their RV, and enjoy nature, and let their families enjoy nature while they visit their families. We did have a traffic... Let me just go by. The component, the general agriculture component in the comp plan for functionally agriculture-related uses include riding and boarding stables, a rural general store to accommodate the ag uses, recreational vehicle parks, and campgrounds. The Land Development Code, functionally ag-related uses states fishing camps, bates and tackle shops, riding and boarding stables, recreational vehicle parks and campgrounds, and a small-scale rural store to accommodate the local community, which already exists because there's horses in the area. There was a wetland assessment done by Craig Martin with Wetland Sciences, so there's 15.56 acres of wetlands, .7 acres of other surface waters, and 18.97 acres of uplands. The Northwest Florida Waters Management District did their base flood elevations, and of course, development would be clustered on the areas of the site, not within the AE flood zone, and field would be limited, of course, to construct the roadway. I wanted to touch on the floodplain report. There were no outstanding floodplain comments or issues related to the project as submitted, and it met the minimum floodplain requirements of the Land Development Code and the comp plan. The environmental assessment was done by UES and also the county's environmental planner. There are two conservation easements, as I stated. The site does not contain vegetative community disturbed lands or preservation requirement. There were no evidence of threatened or endangered species on this site, no historical or cultural resources known, no signs of hazard materials or contamination. The environmental survey stated that the proposed change would decrease the density and intensity from one unit to 2.5 acres with 80% open space, as Sean mentioned, and we will stick with that 80% open space in the developer's restrictive land use agreement.
How many RV slots are you planning?
Twenty.
Twenty, okay.
The developer's land use agreement does address Eglin's density use concerns and also the Planning Commission's unanimous recommendation for approval with the open 80% open space, which we would do. Water and sewers provided by Regional Utilities. We have a letter of approval from them. There's a lift station that will be installed on the property. The site's approximately three miles from the nearest protected wellhead. There is adequate solid waste capacity available, and the associated level of service standard will be maintained. I wanted to mention stormwater management. Depending on the design, and I'm very confident in Jenkins Engineering and their design methods, the site may contain adequate size and soil conditions to achieve the adopted stormwater management level of service standards at the time the approved... If the development is approved, and there again, Jenkins would be doing that. The traffic study was done by Jenkins Engineers and calculated that after the land use changed to general ag, the development would generate four PMP hours trips versus 16 PMP hour trips with the current land use zoning. The study showed that the proposed project would not significantly impact the operation of access roadways and intersections. There were no engineering or transportation review comments. Planning's report stated that the applicant demonstrated that the proposed land development complies with the Land Development Code and the comp plan. The compatibility analysis came back that, if approved, it would reduce the available density but slightly increase intensity, which we're aware of that, as well as allowable uses, as mentioned. The Shorey's family intent of the property fits very well within the neighborhood because it's an equestrian community already. They already have, you know, livestock, and they want to do a community garden, a very tasteful thing. I know that when you mention RV parks, you think, you know, it's awful, it's going to look ugly and these things. But when you go down, and I'll show you on this, North Church Street, the surrounding properties are conservation residential to the south, residential preservation to the north. There's a neighborhood infill and mixed use to the east with a traditional neighborhood development with spring shores. There's also an RV park off Indian Woman Road that looks nothing like this is going to look. This is a very tasteful design. We want it to be something they thought of country living at the beach. I live in the country. I like the best of both worlds. They want to preserve this property and this land for which they live and not disturb the wetlands and the natural vegetation and the habitat. It's going to be very tastefully tucked back within the nature element of this property.
DeeDee, did you have any neighborhood meetings on this?
We did. We didn't... Was it required to have neighborhood meetings? However, we have reached out to the public. I have, and I do have that lady's comment that I would like to enter into the record, and I believe there's here... Some people here to speak. I've heard and read and responded to all the public comments concerning the protection of natural wildlife, the natural resources, the wetlands, noise, traffic, removing of large trees, danger to pedestrians, bike riders, and children. I've read all of those things and responded. The Shoreys realize the importance of all these things, and they purchased their property to live out their lives for their families to enjoy throughout their generations, continuing to protect what attracted them to the area in the first place. They do not wish to harm the natural beauty of the property on which they live. They wish to provide an opportunity for others to enjoy it as well while still preserving its natural state and beauty. The Shoreys understand the obvious concern with changing conservation residentially-zoned property. I understand that because it ensures the protection of wildlife and natural resources and wetlands. They understand there's a 25-foot buffer setback that's required away from the wetlands. There will be no ATVs, no excessive noise or disturbance of the neighborhood because they live there too. Whenever you go off North Church Street, and I'll show you, if you don't mind. North Church Street?
DeeDee, can you hold that higher?
Yes, sure.
Thank you.
Is that fine?
Yeah.
North Church Street, they own all this property here. So this is a very rough draft, but the road would come in right here is just wooded right now, but the road would just meander through the property with little nooks back in there to preserve the natural state. And then the riding stable and the horse trails, which is already a natural trail, that would just continue that, and it would be separate from this. So when you come down this road, you won't even see... You wouldn't even know this was here unless you knew it was there.
Right. Where's the Shoreys' home? Where do they live right now?
Um, back in here. They have a building come in, and they know that it's elevated eight feet because the flood, you know, so they can fly with all of that. They just want to provide a very rustic... It's going to be a great project, one that we can all be proud of. It's not the norm. I understand that. But... And I understand land use changes and zoning changes are very difficult, and they're not popular, but I would like for you to maybe not put this under the umbrella of everything else, because this is going to be a great project, something we can be proud of. I've seen it. I've gone back here, and it looks wonderful, and the Shoreys would like to do that, if allowed. Also, I know that there's people here to speak, and they have to go to work.
Okay.
So, um, but I'd like to be able to answer any questions afterwards, if you'd like.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Sure.
Can we get a motion on this?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Okay. Would anyone else up here like to speak to it before we go to the audience?
I'd rather... Let's hear the audience.
The audience, okay. Who would like... Okay, yes, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is David Berg, B-E-R-G. I'm a resident of South Walton. I have been for four years. And what I've seen trending is as we come west from 331 towards 393 or South Church Street, is we continue to see these chunks of habitat of forest disappear and be replaced with multifamily housing, lots of it. They don't take the habitat into consideration. They don't take the tree canopy into consideration. Our trees are so important. That's where we have a lot of the carbon that gets processed out of the atmosphere. The bottom line is, this area is going to get developed at some point in time. It just is. Walton County is growing way too fast, and people are moving here. It's awesome. I love it here. I'm not trying to say, "Hey, shut the door behind me." But what I am saying is that I think it's important to take a plan like this into consideration that looks at the nature, that looks at the habitat, and is trying to integrate that as opposed to coming in and just wiping everything off the map and building as many houses as they can in whatever area it is. Because like, when you go up and down Indian Woman or any of those streets there, or even 393, you've got these little postage stamp homes. They're tucked one right on top of the other, you know? And I think in a case like this where they're seeking to preserve the natural look and the habitat, I commend them for that because, you know, you look at what they did at Nellie Preserve. You know what I mean? They came in there and they wiped everything out. There's those new condos right there. There's that... That gym is the worst decision for that road and that corner. There are people parked everywhere all the time. You know, so if we're going to go do stuff like that in this area, I think it's important to offset that and prevent that by doing something like this. Because as I understand it, if we change the zoning density from one to two and a half to one in 10, and they agree to keep this 80% open space, that prevents them from coming in there and putting, you know, 20 houses back in there, and you know, you're concerned about traffic now. I mean, put 20 houses in there and wipe all that out and encourage everybody else to start doing that. I mean, I think it's... I think what they're proposing is acceptable, and I think that it's a good idea for... To at least preserve some of what in 20 years, my kids aren't even going to know what that looks like back in there because of, you know, everything that's going on. So, you know, if it's got to be developed, I think something like this is a great idea because at least there's preservation. I walked back there. I'm trying to get rid of being so fat. And, you know, I see deer all the time, ospreys, eagles, you know? And so if they're going to try and keep that, I'm on board with that. So, thank you all. Have a great day.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Let me amend my motion to include the restrictions that the Planning Commission...
The 80%?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll keep my second on that.
Okay. So it's amended to include the 80%? Yes, ma'am.
Barbara Breerwood. B-R-E-E-R. Wonderful. And it would be wonderful if it would stay like this, but if you're going to have 20 short-term rental RVs on this property, the wetlands will be probably destroyed. There'll be litter all over the place. There will be noise pollution because they're short-term renters. They're here for a week, and they do want to have a good time. You can't... You can't find renters and say that this person can't come because they don't love the environment. So people will get in there, and they will destroy it, and they'll destroy the wetlands, and the deer will be gone and everything else. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Margaret? Oh, I'm sorry. I'll get you next, okay?
Sorry. Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. I had sent Commissioner John's email about getting a little extra time so I could speak for the South Walton Community Council. Is that acceptable?
Yes.
I won't go on too long, I promise. Margaret Landry, L-A-N-D-R-Y, and I am speaking for the South Walton Community Council, who has serious concerns about the loss of wetlands, and I appreciate some of the questions that were asked by Commissioner Gladwell. Without a permanent deed restriction for this property, and they keep talking about open space, open space is different when you're talking about conservation areas. So this needs to really be flushed out. I don't think they could probably do what they want to do with 80%, but anyway, it is not just open space. It is supposed to be left untouched, consistent with the preservation requirements of the zoning category, conservation residential. The deed restriction should run with the property and not be a deed restriction like the one that somehow happened with Bishop Tolbert, that the developer bought all the property around it and the deed restriction was negated, so it was no longer enforced. So that needs to be... We need to be... So it was no longer enforced. Uh, so that needs to be, we need to be very careful with how we, we do that. Um, this preservation requirement is more restrict- restrictive than open space for general ag. And as you know, they could go in and clear cut if we don't pin this down. Um, let's see. I'm not going to read everything. Um, the zoning category that protects Walton County residents from damage due to stormwater and runoff, that whole area is a flood plain. It accepts a lot of floodwater. It's, uh, as a result, 80% requirement will help preserve the natural beauty of Walton County. Um, if this is not enforced, South Walton Community Council obviously would oppose this rezoning. Half of the property is wetlands. The entire property is in a high hazard flood plain. The Walton County Land Development Code does not allow RV parks in a flood plain. The designation of Conservation Residential 1 to 2.5 is fitting for this property and should not be changed. This zoning would create a negative and incompatible use in the neighborhood. Because of the wetlands and the flood plains in the area, most of the surrounding properties are all zone Conservation Residential 1 to 2.5, um, which protects wetlands, flood plains, and our community from flooding. This is near the bay in an environmentally sensitive low-lying flood plain. The bay is a vital economic resource for the livelihood of Walton County residents and an important economic resource for tourism, which our county depends on. Why approve a RV park in a neighborhood? And they keep talking about the RV park and how wonderful it would be, but we often see developers come up here and, and pardon me, I know you mean well, but come up and say, this is what we're going to do, and we're going to do all this wonderful stuff, and it's going to be great for Walton County. But once the zoning category is changed, the category is changed. And then you have issues that come up with that and them wanting everything they want in that zoning category. So we just need to be as careful as possible. Um, ISR is not the same as the preservation requirement for Conservation Residential, and we really need to protect that. This is a rezoning. It is not a conceptual hearing for this wonderful plan, as wonderful as it sounds. It is a rezoning. So, thank you very much.
I have a question for you, Margaret.
Yes.
So, how would you feel if there was a developer that was wanting to put a neighborhood in there?
Me personally, living in the Chat Holly area, I think that would be more appropriate um than RVs driving through that neighborhood. Um, but I'm up here speaking for South Walton Community Council. So, um, I think for South Walton Community Council, the reason I'm speaking for them is the conservation of the 80%.
So, and, and we have included, that has been included in the motion, that they maintain that 80% preservation?
Right. But we really need to be careful that it's, it's not open space, that we are talking about the, you know, 80% untouched property.
Is that, is that the way you're looking at it, DeeDee?
Well, as Mac said, open spaces is defined a little bit different in general agriculture, but it would not be, no clear cutting of trees would happen on this property.
But it could.
But it could.
Right. It could. So.
But the Shorries are wanting to put, place these in place.
Can I get, can you come up to the podium, please?
And I don't need to talk at all.
Oh, that's, that's fine.
That's okay. You, you two can, you can answer. That's fine.
At the same time, I understand what the Shorries want to do, and it's all very well intentioned.
It's hard for people to hear when they're watching.
And we completely understand the consultant. Absolutely, we do. But the Shorries live there. They continue to want to live there, so they would manage the property. They are, um, agreeable to the developer's restrictive agreement. They are agreeable to a deed restriction, if that's necessary. They're agreeable to whatever amenities or things that we need to put in place to ensure that this property will not be destroyed or the wetlands or the, I mean, we know how much money and time through lobbyists and with DC and the state about getting money about protecting the bay and cleaning up the bay. We completely understand all of these things a lot.
This property is not on the bay.
It's not. And there isn't.
It sheets off to the bay. I mean, if you look at the, um, it's, it's practically on the bay.
This is in your area, right, on Indian?
Correct.
And it's, it's nothing like this.
Right. That's a non-conforming use. That's neither here nor there.
But it's not going to look like, you know, something like this or down the road from it. It's going to be very natural, rustic.
And I get that. But it could at some point, and that's the problem, that it could. And we don't have a guarantee that it won't.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
What would, what could we put? Well, two things. One, you, you just stated it. It's, um, you can't put an RV park in a flood zone, correct?
I mean, we have, I'm not the director of planning. Mac would answer.
Okay. Well, I thought that's what you said, so.
If this were a.
That's what I saw on the code.
If this were a coastal A-zone, an RV park would be prohibited. This is an AE7 and AE8, which is not that prohibited area. Uh, it has to be constructed in a manner consistent with construction, uh, provisions uh that FEMA provides within the flood zone, which is not prohibited.
Okay.
If it were a coastal A-zone, it would be prohibited. And one further thing, this entire site is occluded, uh, by special flood hazard area. Uh, it's not coastal A, it's AE, uh, with, uh, that base flood elevation of either seven or eight feet depending on the area of the site. Uh, we do have a comprehensive plan policy that discourages increase, uh, in density on parcels that, um, are impacted by special flood hazard areas. Uh, and that could be approved if there were somewhere to place the density, uh, outside of the flood zone. Uh, in this particular case, this property would not qualify for an upzoning for density because it's completely occluded by, uh, a special flood hazard area. Um, this in fact would be a downzoning, so it would not be prohibited. Uh, but I did want to clarify that, uh, the RV park is not prohibited in this particular special flood hazard area.
So with, um, Ms. Landry's concerns, how can we protect the 80%? Because I know that's the word discouraging, or we don't want to do that, but the ability to do this is there.
This is a future land use and zoning map change. Uh, and once that's done, the owner of the property could apply for any use that would be within that palette of approved, uh, primary uses.
Which could, clear cut, could do any of that.
And that's why, uh, Mr. Askins typically, uh, discourages discussing the proposed, discussing the proposed use, uh, as a component of a request to change zoning or future land use map.
But it's part of the record, so that's why it's being discussed. I see RV in bold in one of these sheets, so.
And I do understand that, and that is what they are asserting that they want to do. But a- as we know, a man property changes hands every day.
Right. And that's what I'm afraid of. Oh, I'm sorry.
So I'll, I'll give my admonishment that I give to everyone. When you do a small-scale amendment with or without a rezoning, you first look at the land use, the plan. And what they're asking to go to, you look at every single allowable use in that category, and that's what they can do. When there's a rezoning attached with it, you then look at the zoning category that they're asking to go to and further narrow it to those items. However, you do not ever rely on any representation made here because the developer does not have to honor those. It's not a binding agreement. You do not have to ever take them at their word, one way or the other, because they can sell it. They can change their mind, and that's how that works. At the same time, I also always admonish that overreliance on this in the sense of we love something, it can change, but just because there's a fear they can do too much, it's, you can't base it solely on, well, I'm afraid they're going to do the worst possible thing. But you have to take into consideration the totality of what's being proposed. So I understand they're telling you what they want to do with it. They can do anything within this land use category and this zoning category once it's approved, and that will come back in all likelihood as a quasi-judicial proceeding.
Madam Chair.
Do you have any other questions for me?
No, go ahead. Thank you.
Mike, could you come up, please? If we, if we don't change this zone, can we, can they still clear, clear cut that property under current zoning?
No, sir.
Okay.
No, it's conservation, conservation residential. Uh, there's a restriction on, uh, use of open space, um, and it cannot be completely clear cut.
Okay. So, so tell me, what do we do if we decide to let them do this? What do we do to, to, are there protections we can do to make sure that it doesn't get clear cut? Is that a clear question?
Well.
Well, I'll let Mac start and ask the conference.
Uh, through the development order process, um, we absolutely, uh, I understand the context that this land use might change uh, and the intent of the board to protect our natural environment. Um, and we absolutely will do our best to ensure that the board's desires are met through the development order process. Um, we do have a special flood hazard area that include, that includes the entire property. There are specific requirements, uh, that they have to meet for doing development within special flood hazard areas, uh, and that largely, uh, requires you to restrict those uh, to the least environmentally sensitive part of the property. In order for them to cut one tree down, uh, and as, they would have to get approval uh, for some kind of development. They can't go and do it without coming back to the county and getting a development order. Uh, and at that point, we would apply the appropriate sections of Land Development Code, um, uh, to whatever type of development they were proposing. Uh, one of the things that, that general agriculture does allow, it allows the entire parcel to be used for an agricultural or civil cultural purpose. We have a lot of general ag that is in South County that largely has had a history of civil culture, um, generally large scale. Um, we generally haven't added new general ag pieces to South County, uh, at least that I recall. Um, so this would be the first of those. Um, I think it is a downzoning, um, but it does provide additional opportunities that, that, for development that do not exist in today's zoning. Madam Chair.
Civil culture. If, if they want to use this parcel to plant, to plant pine trees, they could clear cut it and then plant shore, uh, plant, uh, pine trees on it. Is that not correct?
Uh, if it were general ag, they could clear cut every stick.
And so all the natural trees go away and they could put pine trees on it. And, you know, saying, basing your, your total decision on somebody is a dangerous thing because people don't stay forever. I mean, we, we all going to go to that great forest in the sky at some point, correct? I don't know of anybody that's beat it.
Um, yes, and if you're speaking of me as that somebody, uh, being the gatekeeper, um, I absolutely expect that my successor would, uh, have the same, uh, uh, intensity as far as enforcing the rules.
I was talking about people dying.
Oh, yeah.
And they're going.
Well, that, that's not in my plan right now, at least for a few more years.
What I'm saying is, is, is things change.
Yes, sir. They do. Uh, property ownership changes.
Property ownership changes.
In the middle of the night.
And what, what scares me about this is we're talking about applying specific restrictive rules to general agriculture that are not applied up to general agriculture in the north end of this county. And that's a slippery slope that we're going to get, I mean, you just said they couldn't cut one tree without a development order? That's, that's not going to fly.
With regard to civil culture.
They don't have to have a permit.
They don't come to Walton County to get a development order for that use.
That's, that's what I was getting at. This, I mean, this is, this is a, this is an attempt to get around the, the density requirements because 20, you 20 RV sites are more than the houses could be put on it legally under the one to two and a half. It just is. And you can, you know, I can swear on a stack of bibles I ain't going to do it, but I might not be here tomorrow. It, it's just not, you can't depend on or base your decisions on people. It's based on what it is. And what it is, is that is not general agriculture. I, I mean, it just ain't. And in my opinion.
Do, do you know, I know that in Bay County, they just changed their FEMA flood plane maps. And are they working on that here?
Uh, we just completed an update, I think about three years ago. Um, it was in, uh, on appeal for one particular parcel for almost a couple of years. Um, so I don't think we're in review for that today.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, I think we had an update more recently than they did.
My biggest concern is that somebody else would, would take it and do whatever they want with it, and I'm just really concerned with that. I'm kind of afraid that we crack that egg and, and, and bring general ag down here that, you know, but, I mean, I love the idea of the, of the RV park and, and the naturalness and all of that. I love that idea. I'm just torn.
Madam Chair. May I rescind my second?
Of course, King.
I'll rescind my second.
Chairman, Madam Chair, I have a question.
Well, we, oh, we need to see if there is a second or we have a motion.
Okay. We have a mo- we have a motion. We need a second. The motion is to approve.
Well, I want to talk about it, so I'm going to say, I'm going to, uh, second the motion.
For discussion purposes, okay.
Um, can they relinquish certain, uh, rights over to conservation where it would be preserved?
They certainly can do so with regard to can they do that as a condition of this zoning? We're getting into contract zoning, in my opinion, at that point, which is prohibited.
But, this is the first reading. If they, if, if, when they go for a DO, correct me if I'm wrong, Mac, you're going to be answering questions, so come back up here, please. Uh, when they go for a DO, any of these restrictions can be put on that DO, and can we do, put it as a deed restriction?
Can we do what?
Can we put all these restrictions in the DO and as a deed restriction, not as just a DO restriction?
We can't dictate the deed restriction, no, sir.
But we can, if they, if they volunteer, can, can they do that?
I mean, you're getting dangerously close to contract zoning again, but I don't even think we can put all these conditions on.
I'm not talking about the zoning. I'm talking about at the DO.
I don't believe you can put all these conditions on at the DO phase either. Mr. Carpenter, are you comfortable putting all those on a DO?
Uh, those conditions typically would result from some provision of the code or interpretation of the comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
Um, I think there are some significant restrictions with regard to developing within the flood plain and, and staying out of, uh, environmentally sensitive areas, um, that would make it pretty difficult to get a development order that would be inconsistent with protecting those areas.
Well, well, I'm.
But.
I think it's more of an denial issue.
I mean, if they don't, if they don't need to get a development order, then, uh, and Commissioner Gladwell's context of civil culture, then that would not be within our control.
That, that's, that's my problem, is you're, that's a slippery slope when you start saying that you can't do things on general agriculture that are traditionally done on general agriculture. And what happens in the South will apply to the North. And if, you don't have to have a development order, or you don't have to have a permit to, to clear cut general ag. And I don't see how you can, how you can change that. I mean, I.
Really? And quite honestly?
So, I mean, I could go, I could buy that land tomorrow if I had enough money, and I could go out there and clear cut every bling bit of it and plant and put cows on it. And there's, that's a general ag purpose, and you can't stop me from that. And if we start allowing that to be stopped, that's a serious problem for the. And if we start allowing that to be stopped, that's a serious problem for the north and farmers in this county, and that I can't do.
And I do want to comment, deed restrictions can expire and be set aside because we are not going to be a party to the deed, and we have no ability to enforce them is the problem with us.
Here's just a, a suggestion. Um, we had a circumstance, um, years ago on Golsby Road, um, where we had two parcels that were being considered, uh, for a general commercial use. Um, there was concern that that general commercial use might spill over into a residential neighborhood, uh, immediately to the east. Uh, the board directed staff to amend, uh, the comprehensive plan and Land Development Code to put some additional language in the general commercial, um, future land use and zoning categories that would provide the opportunity for, uh, an additional acre and a half buffer between the proposed development portion of the site, um, and, um, the adjacent residential neighborhood. Uh, that is one way that, that we created something that could be applied to a development order, to affect the desire of the board where we were in the same circumstance of if we change it to this, this particular category, we may not have as much control as the board would like, as far as limiting the impacts or limiting the, the opportunities within the new land use category. Uh, that took a little bit longer to do, um, but that is still in the code, uh, today, and we have two parcels that, that, that has been applied to at the, uh, future land use map and zoning stage. But we had to amend our code to give the board the opportunity to do that. Now, a couple of other things, we have land use restriction agreements that you all frequently see. Typically, they have been for, for, uh, one or both of, of two things. Uh, and both of these things are spoken to in the comprehensive plan and Land Development Code. Uh, the provision of affordable housing and restricting occupancy to a certain, uh, income group, uh, and other requirements related to that. Um, and then we have land re, restriction agreements, uh, that relate to our comprehensive plan policies related to compatibility with it, with military bases. Uh, those are the two circumstances that we've used land use restriction agreements on, and the board has approved the authority for those, uh, both in comprehensive plan and Land Development Code. With, and those are not considered contract zoning. And I think our concern at the, uh, years ago when we were looking at those two parcels on Golsby Road, that that might be considered contract zoning, and the way to avoid that was to provide the opportunity for that, that, um, reduced opportunity within the code before applying the code to a parcel. So, I mean, that, that's an alternative that the board may want to consider.
Have we passed the point of no return on that?
I'm sorry?
Have we passed the point of no return on that?
Uh, I don't think we have.
No, I think we may have some re-advertisements, rehearings we may have to do, we may have to slow down, let the planning commission have a chance of reviewing it, but we're not at the point where we cannot do it, period. But we would have to slow down from where we are if we want to make it a, make it an attachment to this.
We'd have to pause this application until the things that the board would like to be in the code, were amended and, and placed in there before we can reconsider this application and apply those new standards to it.
Mac, would this, would this be considered spot zoning?
I, I don't think it would because it's down zoning, and would we offer this to anyone else that's similarly situated? Obviously, that's up to the board, but I.
Is there any ag in this area at all, Mr. Carpenter?
I'm not sure where the closest ag is, but, I mean, this is a down zoning as opposed to an up, giving someone more than their neighbors. Of course, this is the opportunity to potentially do an RV park, uh, where, right now, the neighbors can't do that.
I, I'll add this comment, Madam Chair, regarding that. I've never been dealing with these cases now for my career. I've never found courts to be overly thrilled with a discussion about up or down zoning when you're dealing with spot zoning or reverse spot zoning. While oftentimes you can argue that a down zone to obtain certain additional rights is to the benefit because it's down zoning, typically the court looks at it, well, is this an arbitrary assignment of a zoning that is inconsistent with the areas around it? Or have you taken a small section of land in otherwise consistent land use categories and determined that? So, I mean, when you're singling out a small parcel of land for classification that's different than the surrounding area, that's the pure test. If it provides a benefit to a particular property owner, which I think is fair to say, a court's gonna say, well, why would they apply for it? Otherwise, we're most of the way there unless we can find that the specific zoning change, not what they're proposing to do. And I want to be very clear about that, that's where we get trickier. We cannot, as part of the, this finding I'm about to talk about, get into what they're saying they will do with it. We have to find the specific zoning is in the public's best interest. If we don't do that, and we fail on those first two points, we're gonna fail on a spot zoning analysis. Is it disharmonious to the surrounding area? I guess ultimately that question won't really be answered until you look at what else they do in there, and I agree with Mr. Carpenter about that. Is it preferential treatment that goes to your comment about up or down zone? But that's just one of those four factors that we get into. It's an inconsistency question, doesn't take into account going up or down, so.
Every bit, every, everything around that is conservation residential, everything. And, I mean, that light green is conservation residential. And, I mean, I don't think it's spot zoning on, on its space.
I, I would say this, if you do it there, anybody else that comes in and asks for general ag around there that's conservation residential is gonna have a presumptive entitlement to do the same.
Mr. Chairman, Madam Chairman.
Yes.
I withdraw my motion. If, if it's anywhere close to spot zoning, then we don't need to do this. And as you said, Mr. Askin, this looks like the dictionary version of, of spot zoning. And that, Ms. Highnote, Ms. DeeDee, sorry, but that puts us in a very legit, legit, logistics, where we can be sued by every surrounding neighbor. Because we're, we're giving, changing the zoning to help this one individual neighbor. And I, the, I, I wanted us to discuss this because, first of all, I think anybody that bring, puts the work in that DeeDee has put in and, and her clients deserves to be, be heard. And DeeDee, you did a great job. You did a great job, and, and, you know, as one gentleman spoke, I think that, I think it's a great project. My problem is that it's probably a project that could get us sued eventually.
So, let's, procedurally, you withdraw on your motion. Commissioner Drake, you have a second on the table for discussion. Madam Chair, we need to.
Do you want to change?
Take over the primary motion. Do you want your second to become the primary motion to approve?
No.
So, without the motion.
We don't have a motion.
So, let me say this to the board. One possible consideration would be if the applicant believes they can work up a lure that would justify the public's best interest being preserved, that may get you outside of the ills of the spot zoning discussion. Uh, without the motion on the table, the applicant, rather than potentially having it voted down and not being able to bring this back for a set period of time, might suggest that they would, um, like to withdraw the present request and work with Mr. Carpenter, but that is the applicant's choice. Um, otherwise, the board's gotta take action today, one way or the other.
Could Mr. Atkinson, could, uh, based on what Mr. Carpenter said a while ago, could, could this be taken back to a, like a land use cha, or change the code where we add, uh, the, a rustic type RV park to the conservation residential? Could that, would that be a? Cause the, the part that scares.
You can do that anytime, you want, I, I would, you know, normally you hear me when this comes up, well, can we change the code? And my answer is, well, not for this project. But now if this project's withdrawn and the code's changed, and they come back with it, that scenario, yes, you actually could accomplish that. So, that's why I guess what I would say, never say never, but.
But if you change the, the CR to a rustic, um, RV park, then anybody in that CR would be able to put a rustic RV park in there, two to one, whatever, whatever it is.
Better than, better than general ag.
And I would ultimately say this is legislative termination of the board, so your finding has to address the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. So you have a broad discretion on approval of this or not, subject to the laws we discussed here today.
Well, we need a motion.
Or the applicant may want to give us some feedback.
Would you like to?
If you don't mind, um, there are, there's a yellow surrounding some of the conservation residential, which is residential property, and there's also, um, neighborhood infill in there as well. If we don't want to do the twenty RV spots, they could reduce that amount. They would be willing to do what is requested of them to put the safeguards and securities in place to where they do not want to and they are not able to clear cut in the wetlands, only on uplands, and they would not do that. They would be, they're willing to put things in place that will safeguard all of these concerns because they want to live here for the remainder of their lives and their generation. The, we explained the reason for the requested zoning change, and I think that's important to know, even though, you know, this is a, a map amendment, a zoning change, but we felt it very, felt it very important to let you know what their intent is and that they're willing to put all of these safeguards in place to maintain that intent and to give folks the level of comfortability about it. The spot zoning issue, I would have to, of course, I'm not a planning, um, guru or by any means, but there are RV parks close to this that are in, that's in conservation residential. Um, so, that's a non-conforming use, or it's illegal or something, I don't know what the deal is on that one, but we are wanting to do this correctly, we want it to do it tastefully, and we want to do it within the neighborhood. It fits very well within the equestrian centers and the people that have horses in the area, which they have horses as well. And it, it's, it's a, a great concept, and if we have to withdraw this to make something work, um, I don't want you to think that just because there's not a general agricultural component or use south of the bay, that that's not ever unheard of or can't be done. Something has to be done for the first time, all the time. And I would rather it be something very tasteful and rustic and respective to the neighborhood than something that's not. And we're willing to put on the table what we need to do to make this happen for the neighborhood and the good of the community.
Would a Luna accomplish, accomplish what we're wanting?
I don't know.
Uh, would a Luna accomplish it? Would that accomplish restrictions, the Laura? The Laura, excuse me, the Laura, would that accomplish the restrictions that?
As I was discussing earlier, we use the land use restriction agreement for two purposes, which I believe are grounded in the comprehensive plan and the Land Development Code, uh, which protects us from that contract zoning by having a contract that goes with the zoning change. Um, I'll defer to, uh, Mr. Atkinson on that.
It, it's not traditionally what we use it for, is, I think what Mr. Carpenter is trying to say. So, will that be the complete solution here? No. Does it mean we're fitting a square peg into a round hole? Well, the answer I've always heard with that is, I guess it depends on how big the square is and how big the round hole is, some fit in, some don't. It is not so far outside of what we do that I don't think we could, that we're just, gotta tell the applicant, no, we can't have that conversation. But it is something that I think a lure would be one option. I think the other conversation, frankly, and I, I have to be careful here because I'm your attorney, I'm not the developer's attorney. So, lures are one option, but we'll just talk, big picture for a second. We don't see a lot of these, but Florida statute does have a developer's agreement option. And it requires public hearings, they have two public hearings, they're binding for up to thirty years. There are a number of restrictions that can be provided there. They are a much, much strict and binding version of our lures. Might be one way to look at it, and perhaps the developer wish, would wish to propose something of that nature. And by the way, I've had people ask this many times before at boards, so if any of you are thinking this, I'm gonna go ahead and say it now. Sounds like you're talking about contract zone. Well, I effectively am, except this is the contract zoning the Florida legislature says we can engage in, but calls it as a proposal by the developer under a specific statute to enter into a developer's agreement. And so, doing a chapter one sixty-three agreement that brings us forward could be another way of going about it, or it is. I feel confident that Mr. Carpenter and his team, and Ms. Davis, can sit down and talk to the applicant about other ways that this could be presented. But I will say this, we can't bring this back for a period of time if it is straight out denied, correct, Mr. Carpenter?
Six months.
We're precluded from hearing this again without a super majority vote prior to hearing it again for twelve months.
Yeah, so it's a twelve month window, and I, I would tell you, I don't think you'd have a hard time getting through any of those processes.
Can we add the developer's agreement, you know, as a part of this application?
Not per statute because we have to have multiple public hearings on it, so we can't, without the document being forced, we can't add it here today.
Can we, could we have a motion to continue, which keeps the twelve months out? Have a motion to continue and allow them to talk and see what the best option would be, and then bring it back if they have to have public hearings, things scheduling.
We can, but I'll tell you what I'd ask you to do instead of that, if you'd be willing to entertain the commission. And I'm gonna probably owe the planning commission probably a catered dinner for their next three or four meetings because of this, and probably owe planning staff more than that because they don't love this concept of remand, which frankly, I don't either. It's not what we want to do too often, but this strikes me as one that what the planning commission's already approved, now what we're talking about is going to be different. Perhaps the solution, because this is an ordinance, Madam Chair, we're approving through ordinance process here. Continuing it just keeps it at your level, we have to re-advertise the ordinance. This is gonna require multiple redrafts of this ordinance. My recommendation would be to remand it to the planning commission with the instruction, the applicant work with staff before it is re-presented to the planning commission with any request they want to consider the board's concerns in any related agreements. And now we will leave it open, developer's agreement, allure, or anything else that they want to propose. If the board is willing to do that, I think that is, we would need a motion to approve.
I'll make that the motion.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second.
And may I say something?
Yes.
And DeeDee, I know you're, you and your client are disappointed, but what we're trying to do here is let you have another bite of the apple. And, eh, I think it's a good project, I really do. I, I think, uh, I, I thank you and I thank the, the owner for, for going this far and putting a good project. But if we vote on this spot, on this zoning today and you lose, you're done for a year. So, I, I think it's, I think it's in y'all's best interest to, to do this, if we pass it, get with Mac, y'all have done a great job. Uh, there's just some issues you have to clear up. And I think if you can clear those up, you'll probably get a five.
And I would note, you have seen litigation over developer's agreements in the state of Florida typically come with an allegation there's some form of spot zoning, and because you have to find developer's agreements in the public's interest, usually there are public interest elements embedded within that agreement. public interest elements embedded within that agreement. And we're not talking about the loose concept of public benefit that you see with the conception of, I'm talking about true public interest findings. With those being embedded and accompanied, that's how you address the potential spot zoning issue, in my opinion.
I would, I would ask you that we do what we need to do, Mr. Carpenter, to make sure general agriculture is protected and that we don't put restrictions on general agriculture that are not appropriate.
Yes, sir, I hear that loud and clear.
How many, I'm sorry. How many times have we done this, do we have?
What we're talking about right now? None. The board remanded once in my four years. Well, I mean, you sent back twice that I can recall in my four or so years here. One was very recent because of the discussion of the lesser included category and planning not voting on it. The other one, if I recall, there was some additional information introduced between planning and BCC that the board felt needed additional vetting. Those are the two occasions I've seen, I will say this with other local governmental clients I have and in my private practice, this is often a very preferred method for the final decision maker to get the advice of their planning board and to allow staff to do additional work with the developer, to make sure that their problems get addressed. The other reason why it's preferred is it provides more community input with changes. If you let them just go to work right now and bring something back to you, we have eliminated at least one, if not two, public hearings.
Well, the reason I pulled mine was, I concur with Commissioner Gladwell's concern, but now I'm afraid that we're opening up Pandora's box for a few more down the road, depending on how this goes.
Well, developers' agreements are one-offs. They are, they're applicable solely to the specific project and the specific location it's proposed. If you approve one, you're not bound to ever approve another one of the same nature. They are of non-presidential value, given the unique prospect. And I will say this, it's an uphill burden to go through that process for anybody. I'm not going to make that an easy process if that's the case. Our lure, I think, is not the ideal process, as Mr. Carpenter has politely suggested, without saying, he's, he's not going to say no, I guess. He's not going to say you can't do it, but he's going to say it doesn't fit into what we typically do. So, ultimately, if there's a concern about setting precedent, you know, we go through this process. The way you don't set precedence to vote it down and decide as a legislative matter is just not where the board wants to go. But if the board is interested in seeing changes and accommodations made in this project and giving the applicant the opportunity to do so short of a 12-month set out, this is the only proposal I can give you. Otherwise, based on the direction of the board, we need a motion to approve or a motion to deny. And actually, it's an approval with conditions.
So, we have a motion?
We do not.
No, we do, we are.
You have a motion to continue.
But, and I had a question on that, but it could be continued.
You can continue it, but if they change.
Do we have to do it at their request?
No, we can do it at our request, but if you continue it, you're, you're going to have to continue it to a date certain. And if they change one thing in this ordinance, we're going to have to start, restart the entire ordinance advertising process. We're going to come to that date and ask for new hearing dates, and so.
So, we're remanding it, which is sort of a continuance without, without doing.
And then you're cutting the planning commission out of the loop if you do it that way.
But we have three options, kill, continue, or remand. We got to figure out.
That's where you're at. If you, if you think, if they think they can make changes that are not substantive changes to the ordinance, we just continue first reading to a date certain.
That's what I wanted to identify, and I mean, that's called.
Yeah. I mean, Mr. Carpenter, I mean, I don't, I don't know how, what I'm hearing here, there can be changes made that are not material substantive changes that would change the advertising, but we, we'll do whatever the board tells us, of course. But that is the third option, you're right, is to continue, and I think that would assist us if that's what you want to do. But the board may still be ended up in remand if there are too many changes.
We've got a motion and a second to remand.
We've got a motion and a second to remand. Any other comments from the audience?
So, that means take it back to the planning commission?
You have already spoken on this, I believe.
Is that right?
Yes.
That means take it back to the planning commission? And you guys have done that previously before?
Yo, several, several different times.
I remember that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
I'm curious if they have, I mean, it's their project, we have to be the arbiters, I mean, on this, but do you have a preference? Are you wanting to push this to be continued, or do you want us to?
Well, I would need to consult, let me ask a question, if you don't mind. If we were to withdraw this today and then go back to the drawing board, I guess, with planning, with these notations that you have suggested today, would that be the route to take? Or do we take the remanding of the board to go back to the planning commission? I mean, it's kind of the same thing, isn't it?
Hey, it's effectively the same thing, however, if you withdraw the application, unless the board specifically grants an exception, you've got to go back through the entire process and you've got to repay all the fees. This is not putting you back at square one, this is putting you back one step back to where you were. So, it's basically moving back to where you were two weeks ago.
It's cheaper.
Versus two years ago. But that's the applicant's, you can certainly withdraw, but that's why I want everything on the table. That's their choice, so that's option four.
Madam Chair, could I, could I make a suggestion?
Certainly.
If it were possible just to table this and pause this application to give us the chance to consider whether a land use restriction agreement or development agreement would be appropriate, and I think we would need to, as you suggest, take that back to the planning commission. I think tomorrow's our deadline for planning commission for January, first meeting in January. So, I'm not sure we can get it done for the first meeting in January, but we could certainly get it on February and maybe bring it back to you at the QJ meeting at the end of February.
And so, let me say this, Mr. Carpenter, this is where I'm probably going to be semantic, and that is where everybody in the room hates me as the attorney, so Brooke, Doug, we attorneys are about to take some fire here. But technically, when you table an item, it must be brought up under parliamentary procedure at the very next session of the board, or it is automatically defeated by lack of action. That's what laying on the table actually means. So, doing that would defeat the purpose. Effectively, what you're asking would be the continuance option. My concern with continuing it is, it is an advertised ordinance. So, the continuance, it's not just like continuing a development order, we're actually continuing an advertised ordinance, and we're keeping the original ordinance live and continued when we know it's, well, we don't know it's going to be amended with all respect to the applicant. The applicant may not amend, they may say, no, this is what we want. But if they do amend, we know we've got to start the advertising process over again. So, to avoid notice, to avoid an issue with neighbors not getting proper notices, my thought is to remand back to the planning board and letting you schedule it at your convenience and are working through those issues as part of it that they have on the table would effectuate what you're describing, Mr. Carpenter. So, that's me being overly semantic, but trying to find a way to accomplish what everybody's saying.
I mean, as we're going through this, I certainly have concern for applicants, the amount of money they've spent to get to this point, and that, that's not lost on me, and if that, that would protect them in some manner, then I would.
This avoids us having to waive fees, it doesn't make them go back through every step of the process, it just sends them back to you and lets you get them on an agenda when y'all work through things.
Okay.
And I gladly facilitate anything you need, Mr. Carpenter.
So, we have a motion and a second to remand it back to planning. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It passes, so it's remanded back. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Okay, we have one item left, I believe, and.
It is QJ, if I may swear to the audience. If staff, members of the public, the applicant, anyone wishing to speak, ask a question or otherwise comment on item 35, Peaceful Lane Platte. Need to be sworn at this time, please stand, raise your right hand, repeat after me. I do hereby swear or affirm.
I do hereby swear or affirm.
That the testimony I present.
That the testimony I present.
Will be the truth.
Will be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth. Thank you, staff and the audience, the applicant are sworn, Madam Chair. Mr. Carpenter?
Okay. Mr. Carpenter?
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thirty-six, oh, 35, I'm sorry.
The Peaceful Lane Platte, this is a request to approve by final plat. It's been reviewed by Kelly Schultz, and I'll ask Kelly to briefly introduce it for us.
My name is Alan Tucker, T U C K G R. It's a pleasure to be in front of you all today. I apologize for having Tony on the board, Chairman, that Platte's been sitting around for quite a while, so. Any questions, I would be glad to answer.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay.
Without Kelly, we need to enter the staff report into record. That's our competent substantial.
Well, I kind of, okay, thank you. Kelly?
I'll be brief.
That's right. Would you state your name to the clerk, please?
Yes, this is a request to approve by a final plat. It's project number PLA.
Kelly, would you state your name?
Oh, I'm so sorry, yes, it's Kelly Schultz, K E L O Y S C H U L T Z.
Thank you.
You're welcome. It's project number PLA 24000028. It is a minor plat application that's consistent with the previously approved development order, which is M I N 24000026. It's submitted by GCT Incorporated on behalf of Rodney and Nicola Lynn. They're requesting to plat four single-family lots and associated infrastructure on 1.4, 1.14 acres with a future lease of residential and a zoning district of neighborhood infill. The property is within District Four. It's located approximately 145 feet from the intersection of Woodward Drive and Peaceful Lane. It is identified by the parcel number in your packet. I'd like to ask, there's actually two parcel numbers. Would you please enter the staff report into the record?
Yes, I moved.
This, this plat did go to the technical review committee on July 17th of 2024. They unanimously voted to approve the plat, vote was six to zero, all conditioned that all comments are resolved, all fees are paid, and the MLR is received by staff and sign. Those things have happened, so the conditions have been accomplished. The plat application is consistent with the land development code and the comprehensive plan. So, unless, I mean, you've already heard from the applicant. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Does anyone have any questions? I know we have a motion and a, and a second on the floor. Any questions? No? Does the audience have anything to say?
This is perhaps not the place to say it, but I would really encourage the board to consider these items as consent agendas. These projects are built out, there's nothing to change. The staff has a lot of great work to do, and I know you guys as well have a lot of work to do. And I would speak for a lot of surveyors and perhaps a lot of staff if this could be considered on the consent agenda.
We're actually looking at that, I won't believe our meeting today. It can't be just pure consent agenda because it is a public hearing, it does have to be heard, and it is quasi-judicial by Florida court determination, the Supreme Court's made it clear about that. We've looked at what some other jurisdictions do that deal with a lot more of these, and frankly, we're trying, we're starting to trend in that direction, where what you would have is a sworn section at the end of some of your meetings, perhaps a regularly scheduled meeting, we have no other land use items, and that the board then approves all plaits individually, and the board can pull out any plat that it wants additional information on if the staff has entered evidence that complies with chapter 177.
That would be helpful.
That is correct, but I, there are counties that do allow that on consent agendas.
I'm aware some counties do not require sworn testimony on these. I believe that's in derogation of Florida Supreme Court's guidance on how this should be. So, I, while I respect that some places do it, I do have to defer to what I believe the Supreme Court's guidance on how these cases should be heard, but we can still fast track them a little bit more, and we're working on some ways to do that.
I would greatly appreciate it.
What you brought up was good, was good. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am? You didn't hear a second? It's Mr. Anderson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, folks. That is all we have for you today, thank you.
Thank you very much.